I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. The time is 2:08. We're in the council chambers and this meeting is accessible through Zoom, which we've listed on our website. Call to order from my far left, Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Whoop.
Here.
Councilmember Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Councilmember Aversold.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
And this is Mayor Kuhn. And from staff, we have Finance Director Jeff David Rodenbach.
Here.
And we have from Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
And from the clerk, we have Josh Decker.
Here.
And our C Administrator, Interim City Administrator Tony Vasecki.
Here.
Thank you. We will come right back to our tourism review. But we're gonna not wait and skip around a little bit. So we will start with our overview of our, almost all of this is our Public Works Department. So go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. I am waiting for my computer to load.
And we've asked Council if they could, unless you particularly want to ask, is there questions at this point? We're gonna wait till you get through your each department. I mean, not the whole thing, just the different sections to then ask questions, which they can write down. So you may answer them for us. But that's up to you how you want to do that. And Council, I want you to just freely, when you feel it's appropriate, freely ask Jeff questions without having to put your light on.
Almost there, sir.
I had to zoom the I had to zoom the mayor of Brock, Norway today for a sister city at 8:00 AM. So that's another reason I drift. So they have 39 council members.
Oh, my God. How fun is that?
The island of, it's not an island, in Brock.
So is that like everybody in the city?
No, they have about 58,000 people and they have more, but they, they're different parties. They're all different parties. 20% is one party, 20% is another, 2% is another. There's like 12 parties. So we actually don't have a two pack.
Okay, thank you for your patience. I'm just gonna start with a quick overview of Public Works, just to get everybody on the same page. I'm gonna start with what I call a Public Works Functions Diagram. I'm gonna share that. It'll show up on the screen, hopefully. Oh, and it's really small. Let me zoom in a little bit here.
Councilmember Markley was in that too. So it was great. We're involving her a lot.
Okay, so this is what I show, I've shown, prepared for new employees and for council members who are, sorry, candidates who are applying for council and kind of show them a quick overview. I don't know if all of you have seen this, maybe not, maybe so. Apologize. It's been updated recently. But this is just a core function and we can provide this to you in PDF. Because it's, as you can see, it's quite a good sized document, but.
Is it possible to make any crisper? Or is it my eyes?
I think it's the screen projector.
All right.
The new system.
Okay.
So if, what it essentially shows is that Public Works has a lot of responsibilities throughout the city. We have our Engineering Division, Wastewater Division, Operations Division. And then the Parks Program is now a dash line because we continue to work with them. Engineering, we do right-of-way utility and private development review, capital project design and construction, general engineering support, and transportation and utility capital planning. And then Wastewater Division is responsible for all collections of sewer, treatment of sewer, and discharge of treated effluent. And then Operations Division includes building operations, all building operations, including the buildings that we own but lease, Ed and Boat, Scansy Net Shed, Scansy House, all of those, the rental houses, stormwater operations, street operations, fleet maintenance, water operations for city water system, not all water systems in the city though. Parks operations and utility billing. And then those all come into Public Works as a whole. Public Works is also responsible for property acquisition, right-of-way vacations, utility extension agreements, any legal issues, claims, rate studies and administration of the rates, budget development, administration of budget development, franchise agreements, and GIS, our GIS program. And again, Parks Program has been on the side with a dash line, but we work closely with all departments and especially including Parks Program, which is still on this one, this version for now. So that's a quick overview of Public Works. The budget you'll see here or that you've seen been provided accounts for revenues coming into Public Works and expenditures going out of Public Works.
Is that done with overview?
Yeah, I was gonna stop sharing this unless anybody had questions.
And are you, not to jump totally around, I know Laura has other commitments too. So are you ready, Laura? Okay, do you mind swapping over? Okay.
I'm just sharing my presentation with Zoom here.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. There is a slight update that we had from LTAC reviewing the budget narrative. We're asking for actually less than we have in the budget narrative that you have provided. One category that we admitted was staffing. And another was slightly over. So we are actually asking for 615 total out of the fund, which is less than the 657 that the narrative in front of you has. I'm also happy to pass out a paper copy of that.
Laura, I'm sorry.
That we should be on.
I don't actually know.
Maybe a 136.
Shall I distribute a hard copy to?
Whatever you, whatever you would like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we had a slight update there in the categories and how they're distributed, as well as the inclusion of staffing. So.
Okay, so we could actually replace these in our, in our budget book. Is that correct?
Yes. On the upside, we're asking for less. The items in the budget were, I believe, at 657, and this is at 615 total. And that is designed to be offset by sponsorships and donations as well. Let me know when you're ready.
Go for it.
There's nothing I love more than some good data. So we took a look at what we took in from our lodging tax fund as related to 2019. In 2019, we showed 47463. That was up 8% over 2018. We took in 263930 in 2020, which is down 44%. And in 2021, we are estimated, if we stay on track with exactly the 2020 pacing, to take in $365,000. I anticipate we will do better than we did in September, October, November, December of 2020. That number, however, is down 33% from 2019. So we still have a way to go to recovery. Our expenditures. One of our main concerns from LTAC was that we weren't spending the amount we were taking in. And it is important to have that reserve fund that we do have in the fund right now, but we heard that and we adjusted. So in 2019, we spent 41% of what we took in in lodging tax income. In 2020, we increased that to 89%, although we were very cautious about spending where we needed to and cutting back when we need to do, given COVID restrictions. In 2021, we are on track to spend about 156% of our lodging income, which addresses the spend that we couldn't spend in years past. I thought a great point of measurement was taking a look at our visitors' data and the number of guests that we brought in. This is from our Datafy and SeaSource geofencing account, which through the Washington Hospitality Association, we have slightly underwritten. It provides us a great amount of data. We can see here in our top months, and I use June over June as a comparison, we have recovered about half. So at our highest, we were at about 69,000. We dropped to about, I want to say 20-something in June of 2020. And then we caught up just a little bit and were around 40, 45,000 for this past June. So again, we have a good amount to go, but we haven't experienced the impact in the ways that other cities have. So we're mitigating that as best we can.
Laura, the numbers on that slide, both the columns and the rows are, we can't read those. Can you just verbally tell us kind of what that graph represents?
Certainly. So if we see the high end in June 18, we see just over, so about 64,000 visitors in June of 18. And I want to make sure I've got in the right month there.
The vertical axis is numbers of visitors and the horizontal axis is the month.
So we start in December of 17 and we go through to August of 21.
Okay.
Yes.
What method do we use to track the number of visitors? How do we get this data?
It's pretty complex. It's a mix of iPhone data, not just iPhones, but smartphone data entering a very specific geofence. And then also credit card data and all of the other items that are collected from anyone who enters that specific fence.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so, yeah.
We don't, we don't know who they are specifically. We just have a general idea of what the demographic is. So I couldn't say Joe Smith visited on XYZ date. That's all. Private information. But we have an idea of the demographic, who's returning, where they're staying, if they're staying at hotels, if they're visiting the History Museum, if they're visiting Scansy Park, those kinds of details. So we can create an idea of who our target demographic is, who's responding to our advertising and marketing, and where we have opportunities for more success.
Is that data collection something we pay for?
It is. It's underwritten by the Washington Hospitality Association. So we pay a very competitive amount. But it also helps us inform our targeted marketing and digital advertising.
I think it's worthwhile. I just think it's, I'm curious.
Yeah, it's very interesting.
So would that tracking data be able to tell us if there was repeat visitors, if it was the same person, if they were coming from Paulsville or something?
Indeed. So we can see that right now, what it shows us is that we skew younger than we expected. So it's 55 and under with a bachelor's degree from the general regions of Washington, I mean, Washington State, we're very regional right now with the restrictions on travel. Oregon, the Bay Area, LA, and then also Phoenix. We have a little bit in Texas and then on the eastern coast and Virginia, which is also, we think, probably related to military travel.
And does this collection method also give us the locations? I mean, I think you mentioned, like, if they go to a park, it'll tell us. But can it, you know, identify what are the popular spots that people?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So you can see, for example, if somebody is, you know, visiting Scansy Park and from the local region or from, you know, the Bay Area. So we see what's happening there. We see the movement. We see what people do while they're in town. Not in real time. This is like a two-month delay on that too. So don't ever feel you can't go to Scansy Park because we're at work.
The drone up there is looking at me.
So, but it is fantastic information that also informs where we advertise. And what we're seeing right now with the launch of our digital advertising campaign is that we're getting the most click-throughs from LA. So we're resonating with Southern California and it's fascinating. And in a younger demographic than we usually, we thought our primary audience was over 65, and that has massively changed with measurement.
So are you saying that we can tell if somebody's been to Scansy Park?
We can't tell the exact person, but we can tell the number of people that went to Scansy Park on a specific date. So we can tell how many people attended a Summer Sounds concert, for example. If they have, I mean, if they're, if they're off-grid entirely and they've never registered anywhere, maybe not. But it will tell us a general number and it's usually fairly accurate.
If I said my unknown cousin came to visit and stayed at the Maritime Inn and he came from Nebraska and I was fibbing, you'd be able to say, no, he didn't?
No, not that direct. We can usually tell that there's a number of people. So let's say the Maritime Inn has 2,000 unique visitors in the month of July 2019. We can see that and we can see what their general demographic range is. We can also see if that, if people who also stayed at the Maritime Inn went to the History Museum or went to the park as well. So we look at those numbers as they correlate. But not, we can't tell individual itineraries.
So somebody is following where their cellphone goes, even if they're not using it?
It usually, it's how they're served ads. So if you ping off cellphone towers, it can kind of geolocate where the largest audience is. So if you've ever been served an ad while you're on your phone looking up something and you see a specific ad on a website and it's for somewhere local that you can get a great lunch deal, that's utilizing geofencing services to serve you that ad.
Thank you.
So, so this is, this information is all being tracked through RFID and a credit card or cell phones?
It's a variety of things and their methodology is a little bit more complex than my technological understanding, but that is, that is the way. RFID, I don't know if that is necessarily something that.
But in general, that's how this data is getting collected and disseminated.
As far as I understand it, and by, by Google does it, for example. So it pulls from that kind of data.
Well, boy, from my perspective, that is a very scary commentary and.
Yeah, I think so.
But if it's there, we're gonna use it towards our advantage.
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean we know who you are or what person was there. And there are GDPR standards that are being enacted in the UK and Europe right now that speak to a little bit more about what data you can collect. So there is.
I mean, I won't get into a philosophical discussion on my feelings about this whole thing in general, but my other question is, you were showing the slides with expenses and revenues. I'm assuming that those reflected what's in the budget as far as the graphs and the pie charts?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, let's let her get through the presentation. Might answer some of the questions.
I'm sorry, just have one more last question. So can you tell us what the average amount of time that visitors are staying here in town?
Our largest amounts right now are one day to two days. We do see a good amount of people who golf at Canterwood that stay five days, which I found interesting.
Well, we need to change our logo or slogan from Welcome to the Harbor. We know where you are.
No, no.
And again, this is, this is used for most of the members of the Washington Hospitality Association. So it's not groundbreaking, but it is a good way to measure if we're being successful in our campaigns. I did want to go through some of the successes as well on the accomplishments for 2021. We launched our new Visit Gig Harbor Washington site. We designed that in-house for cost savings. We've also directed a lot of our advertising there. We host meeting pages. We host accommodations pages. So there, it's an easy way to go through and book. We launched our Google Ads campaign with this targeted demographic information that we have from SeaSource. We also secured a good amount of press coverage on our destination, even with the restrictions that we had for travel. We have targeted and promoted posts on social media sites. We have retargeting ads in partnership with Meeting Professionals International, targeted at Washington, Oregon, and California. So we get that long-term base of business back to our hotels. We have e-newsletter content running in AAA weekends. I just approved a proof this morning, and 1889 magazine. We have social content development happening. So we're sharing things more frequently and we're also streamlining our audience from several accounts that we're out there and focusing on different topics to two specific accounts, one for the city and one for tourism. We executed our 2021 trolley season and we did a partial season of Movies in the Park and Summer Sounds. Our goals for 2022 are to outreach to community and corporate sponsorships for event and advertising opportunities annually to offset costs and eliminate the multiple asks that we have throughout the year to individual businesses for individual underwriting. So we really want to streamline that process and see what we can do to enrich our events and enrich our outreach. We do want to do the publication of the city-owned visitors guide and mailing to all 335 and 332 zip codes. That is our large-term goal. That depends on how much we can secure in sponsorship funds. And that is something that we're on track to meet right now. We are going to hire a departmental assistant, which I am very excited about. We're looking to grow the quality of our summer events, add paid vendor spots, local booths, food trucks. I think you missed Wook for attending Summer Sounds and mentioning something about that. And then experiential element to the movies in the park. So we really want to make it something that people travel to experience. We're looking to add a winter and holiday tourism draw, such as a ticketed entry ice rink or a downtown holiday lights experience. And we're looking to continue the $125,000 in LTAC grant program funding to increase the diversity of grant recipients and increase the diversity of events that we throw here as we continue into our COVID recovery. I know you've seen past situational analysis of 2019 on our budget and how that was spent. We've really, really increased our external grant program from in 2019, $22,000, to this year. And you'll see those awards, $125,000. 2020 was a bit of a shift too, as we really were held back on what we could do with tourism marketing. So we see a little bit more of an uneven spend there. However, you did save a bit on not having an assistant for the position. And in 2021, the analysis looks a little bit more balanced. Specifically, we were able to spend the full amount that we budgeted for specific tourism advertising. So we went out with a digital campaign. We also went out with several e options, so newsletters, targeted audiences, making sure that we both looked at the business and corporate side of things as well as the leisure travel side. Our capital expenditures were the $100,000 that council approved for the Ansich Dock, the paddler's dock. And then we kept our admin expenses around 135 and did 120 in grants. Initially, we had awarded 125. However, we found one was out of the bounds that MRSC would approve. Yes, Miss Wook.
The e-magazines that you were in, is there, do you know, was there a way to track to see if anything happened with that, those e-magazines?
That's, that's a little bit of our Google Analytics are proving. So AAA Weekender and then 1889 Magazine specifically, I can look at the dates. Those ran and look at our Google Analytics and see who's been clicking through.
Okay.
Thank you. Indeed. As our strategy, as always, we're data gathering, we're measuring what we're doing. We have an informed digital marketing campaign, so we know who we're reaching out to. And then we look at it, we evaluate our successes, we measure what we're doing, and then we reassess and adjust. And in a images that could double as my headshot, any questions?
You know, I may have already asked this again, but so this data, it'll tell us where exactly in town the most people are going, what they're coming for, how much time they spend at these things. And what kind of, just in a brief picture, what can you tell us about that? What are the highlights that people seem to be coming to? I think you alluded to Canterwood, but is that?
Interestingly, for five-day visitors, we're longer, Canterwood specifically. So there's a correlation with the longer stay with golf. And that's an interesting insight that we didn't have before. What we found is that our audience skews younger and we do see more families coming in. Downtown remains one of our largest draws. Uptown is second. And those are more general geofences. I also have one grouped together for each one of the hotels and then broken out specifically. So I can look at hotel cluster and see how many people stayed in hotels over the course of the last year. And that's where we got those numbers for visitors per month. So the visitors' data. So we are skewing younger than we thought by a decent amount. We are skewing more toward families. And I think that's an interesting changing demographic for our city as well as our visitors. And, and that's something that we'll, we'll continue to pitch. So we have several, especially with COVID, we have several verticals that we go out to. And one is outdoor specific and on the water. The other is families, the other is romance, and the other is food and wine.
And what, just out of curiosity, what does the, what are the families doing here?
Well, when I, this, I'd rather have her do a presentation because we're never gonna, this isn't a Q and A on how tourism operates. It's to go over their budget.
Okay, got it.
And we'll just, we'll never get, we'll get out of here again.
Just new information.
Got other staff.
I'm, I'm more than happy to give me a call. I'm happy to go through. I'm happy to share my screen with you.
Maybe in December or January, you could do a presentation at a council meeting.
I'm very, yes, absolutely. And we'll have some fun data there too. Then we'll have the 2021 wrap-up.
Got a lot of, lot of new things that tourism is doing that's exciting. So she can showcase it all.
And.
I apologize for interrupting.
No.
Oh, not at all. I'm happy to answer any questions. I will take that opportunity to go into our narrative and go over some of the amounts. And then we'll go into the LTAC grants. I'm going to stop screen sharing. So for tourism marketing and advertising, what we're looking at is our promoting our newly designed website, seeing those numbers rise and seeing how many click-throughs we have from bookings from that site. That's where all of our digital advertising is focused right now. We are not omitting print. We're just looking more intelligently at why we're investing where we're investing. So if we do an e-newsletter to Sunset Readers, for example, we want to know that we're hitting people in that exact same demographic that are interested in our location. So for 2022, we were looking at 80,250. That gives us a decent amount to focus in on digital marketing. It also gives us a few print advertisements with long-term partners like South Sound Magazine using their regional data, Seattle Met, and then also some advertising in conjunction with Visit Kits app, which we will share cost on.
That's 20,000 less than what's in our original budget. And are we missing anything there?
No, I just moved that to another destination for content creation, which will be in our number three. All right. Thank you. Next, we have staffing, admin, and DMO expenses. We run Visit Gig Harbor as a destination marketing organization from inside the city here. I am your DMO. I am also your Tourism Communications Director. So we're very much looking forward to staffing the communications department with another full-time employee, which will be an assistant. That is an increase of a 0.4 full-time employee from our 2019 numbers. We have been a one-person operation for the last almost two years, so 2020 and 2021. And that leads us into with two full-time staff members, staffed at 50%. Employees' benefits and overtime calculation is at 118,818. And then we go into the shift as well for that, that $20,000. So content creation. Under tourism, marketing, and advertising, we're gonna utilize our local photographers, videographers, all of our local content creators essentially to really tell the story of what Gig Harbor is and what differentiates us as a city from, say, Port Townsend or Anacortes and tell the story of who we are and why you want to be here. We are, in addition to that, looking at modernizing our existing brochures. I'm not sure if anyone's picked up a nut-shred brochure, but they're from five years ago, as are our golf brochures. So we want to make sure the correct information is out there. We also want to reproduce the tear-off map to notate all the new businesses in town, where you can park, what you can do. And that's been something that we've heard strongly about. The hotels really love giving that to their visitors. That amount, under 43,000, may be offset by advertising and, and sponsorships as well. We also, moving into number four, have partnerships and sponsorships. We renegotiated our Visit Kits app partnership. Previously, it was an in-kind partnership where we were featured on each other's website. We partnered up with several other items, including Critical Mention, which is a media monitoring service. So we can tell where we're being covered, how many people are viewing our stories that we're working on. And we also gain access to a media database. So we can do a little bit more accurate pitching and go beyond just the general Gig Harbor area. We have a list, of course, for when things happen with the city and who would like to know those things for tourism. We're looking a little bit further. We have a list, of course, for when things happen with the city and who would like to know those things for tourism. We're looking a little bit further. So we'll be pitching Los Angeles Magazine, 944 Magazine, those kinds of things. And that gives us the opportunity to have fully updated information for those, those media outlets. We also, under this, put in our participation in the Seattle Boat Show. We put in our partnership with the Travel Tacoma in Pierce County, and we have our Sea Source and Data Five membership for that geofencing data included there too. For media hosting, we've allocated $6,500. Typically, we will look for accommodations to be underwritten by the hotel or accommodations that they're staying in, but we also have the opportunity to fly someone in if they're of an A-list caliber, for example, someone like a travel and leisure editor or a Bon Appetit editor, or something along those lines, if we pitch an appropriate story.
Have we used it before?
Okay, no, we, we were unable to do that in 2020. I think we hosted one person and spent a total of $120 on media hosting in 2020. But that's mostly because everyone was not traveling. So we have an opportunity to spend there. And again, all of these, these amounts are intended to be measured on the return on investment too. The mailing of the Visitors Guide to the Gig Harbor community, we've long said that our citizens are our best publicists, and we believe we're doing ourselves a disservice with getting the Visitors Guide out mid-summer, when people are already here, already in town, and the distribution path is just really at local businesses. We want to see that expanded. We want that to go out in the beginning of the year. We want our citizens to know what's happening for the remainder of the year, so they can plan, invite, and speak for events on our behalf. I don't know about you, but I found out about a lot in having conversations about what people want to do and who they want to bring here. So we know that's going to be super helpful. We also think that a lot of people are uninformed about all the things you can do in Gig Harbor. So we want to make sure that that message is out there, and that it's a real publication that speaks to who we are and amplifies local voices, local businesses, and the ways that not only visitors, but locals can make an economic impact.
So that amount in your new document is $20,000, and the original is $53,000.
Yes, so I included print within the, the mailing in the initial category. So I've separated that out. This is just.
Postage, is that what this is?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And that may be, we're looking at a total of 50,000. The print, I haven't gotten the full estimate for that yet, but we also have some miscellaneous funds to apply if that should slightly go over. But we're, we're hoping. As far as city-sponsored events go, the cost associated with Summer Sounds, movie nights, our holiday tree lighting, and the potential for a new holiday event designed to amplify off-season travel to Gig Harbor is under this category. This amount is intended to be offset by sponsorships. In past years, we've asked for 35,000. This year, we're looking to spend around 70, but again, that is dependent and scalable on if we have those sponsorships that we're looking at. And we are on track to meet that. Again, as mentioned, there's the support to Travel Tacoma in Pierce County. I actually didn't break that out under partnerships and sponsorships. That is, that is different. For Travel Tacoma specifically, it's $10,000. For Visit Kits app, it's 7,000, and that includes a good amount more representation that we were getting in our past relationship. For Pierce Transit, and this is a, this is a gross amount. We intend to spend around $20,000 on, or probably around $20,000 to $30,000 on that amount. That's underwritten by the city. We typically have gotten around $25,000 from donations from the trolley stops, businesses at the trolley stops, in order to underwrite that. This past year, we got 20. We're looking to continue that. So I've included 50,000 there. We are not intending to spend that from city coffers. We are looking for that to be underwritten by sponsors.
So is this, this $50,000, is that the cumulative amount from the uptown and the other people that have been donating to this over the years?
Usually uptown and, and others give around $25,000. So usually, it's almost a half and half cost. We have upped the amount this year. This past year was $42,000, but we've upped it just in order to account for inflation in the year-over-year spend, so that, it will likely be slightly under $50,000, but we're hoping 20 to 25 from our, our partners.
And the, the trolley costs about $258,000, and so our share is about, it was $48,000 last year, so it'll be 50 this year. So we have to show what it costs us, even if we'll get money coming in to offset that. So that's why.
What is the 20,000 in parentheses representing?
What we'll get back.
The, the donations from our partners.
So it's really going to cost us about 30. But for accounting purposes, we, we can't show the differences. We have to show what it costs us.
Yeah.
Just in case.
We offset it with the donations.
Correct.
And so I'm assuming you're getting to the end of your outlay. Where, where is the, how much are we spending for this data collection? Where is that spelled out?
That is under partnerships and sponsorships. And that is an underwritten amount. Usually, it's around 10,000. Washington Hospitality Association covers half of that for everybody who in
It's item number four.
Yes.
It's where at?
Number four.
The objectives, and that's, and it's the term geofencing data.
Correct.
Well, it's part of the, it's part of the 259. It says geofencing data.
So I think our negotiated rate is about $6,000 a year.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Up next is operations, training, and travel. So these are all the items that are required just to start up in the day. So our IT, our share of IT, our office equipment, laptops, electronics, live promo sign management, which is down at Jerisick Park, which we've had some trouble getting online, again, printing, mailing costs, anything and everything that has to do with, with operations. And we're, we put that at 42,915. And I believe that includes some staff travel for conferences, whether or not that happens, based on the the atmosphere that we have with current travel remains to be seen. All right, and then we head into lodging tax grants, which the grant fund's available for local organizations. We have it $125,000. And I'll bring that up on my screen shortly here, as we only have one other item. Our anticipated outlay is $10,000 for signage. And those are just updates to existing signs.
Oh, okay, there was on, on the original one, under capital expenditure, there was 120.
Yes, 135, I think. So initially, what I wanted to do was take a look at the four categories, the four quadrants that were approved to spend on LTAC and make sure that we were evenly funding each one of those. For capital expenditures this year, we don't have any major projects. I did put 125 there initially in hopes that we'd be able to purchase an ice rink. Whether or not that is a better idea for leasing or, or owning remains to be seen. And I also think we can lease with a good amount of our sponsorship dollars.
So, so that is gone, the 125,000.
Yes, no ice rink.
But she might, you know, we're trying to lease one and for the winner, to get a winter event, and so she might bring it back, you know, with amendment.
And then that, that amount total is, is also going to be based on the operator's ability to sell tickets. We'd be responsible for the amount if they didn't meet their total, the amount that was discrepancy, and that's what our sponsor make up her. So that's the idea.
Where we're going to put it, have we thought?
Uptown.
Oh.
You know where the farmer's market used to be, up by the movie theater?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be like up there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uptown, I don't remember a farmer's market.
There was.
But up by the movie theater.
Yeah.
I like that idea much better than Crescent Creek Park.
Oh, yeah.
It didn't, it doesn't work under the salt, the sand, we found out too.
Yeah, just because there's no businesses at Crescent Creek, so people are just going to drive in and drive out. This way, they can go to some of the uptown businesses, and there's parking, so brilliant, love it.
Indeed, indeed. And the idea too, with Crescent Park was to maybe even have people drive through downtown. But yes, there's also residences near Crescent Creek Park, so. All right, I'm going to share my screen again, and we can go through the 2022 grant application recommendations. All right.
So one thing, just so we can get through this too. This isn't to necessarily make changes to this, as we talked about. But this is to hear what we, we had LTAC group approve all this the other day. So since we can't see very well, if you would at least
Oh, absolutely.
Say what they, in briefly.
We do not have the handouts for that. I'm happy to.
Unless you can make it bigger, and then they can just see it. Yeah.
Oh, better, 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 better.
Okay. And I will scroll over so you can see the full amount. So we had a total of 22, or 23 asks this year. So this was more than we've ever had in the past. We've had about seven to eight asks. And we were pleasantly surprised. One of our goals has been to diversify the amount of applicants, and we were able to do that this year. So we also had some guidance from MRSC on whether or not for-profit businesses could apply. There are some restrictions on what they can apply for, but they can apply for event operations.
If you can go a hair smaller and they can see the ask and the, and the receive.
And I'll, I'll scroll for that as well. Bring that over. There we go.
Oh, perfect, perfect, perfect.
She's, she's doing it.
Okay, so I'll go by these fairly quickly. The Gig Harbor Senior Center applied for $1,500 for the Shamrock and Run, which applies in a need period, March. They applied specifically for.
Can you, I'm sorry, because, because this was 30. Can you just say the, the operation, the event, and then if you, if you go into the events, we won't get through this.
Sure. Okay, yep. So the Gig Harbor Senior Center ask was 1,500. The award was 500 for Shamrock and Run in March. PTSD Foundation had their Race for Soldier, Soldier, Pull for Soldier and Prayer Breakfast ask at 20,000. We awarded 15. Greater Gig Harbor Foundation applied for two events, which are broken out into, it's a cider swig twice, essentially, also operating with a summer sips. So they applied for $7,500 for cider swig and 5,000 for summer sips. We awarded 5,000 for cider swig. Summer steps was at zero, as we determined that was a non-need period. The Carper Boat Shop applied for operations. They asked for 12,000. We awarded 2,000, and I'm happy to go through some of the data that showed how many people attended over the past year. Crescent Valley Lavender Farm applied for 2022 summer operations, which is a variety of events. They asked for 16,100. We awarded 5,000 of that. The Greater Gig Harbor Foundation also functions as the host for Rattle Dem Bones, which is the Halloween bike ride and costume contest. They asked for 1,500 for marketing. We awarded 1,000. Dunigan Brewing, which is the newest tenant over on the west side, applied for this Celtic Music Festival happening in March, a need period. They asked for 15,000. We applied, we awarded 6,000. The South Sound Pickleball Club applied for the South Sound Pickleball Tournament at 14,000. They needed full funding or they couldn't do it. We, we passed on that. The Harbor History Museum, for their 2022 operations exhibit, asked for $20,000. We awarded 11,500. And the Gig Harbor Sportsman's Club applied for the seafood shoot, experts shooting. And they asked for 6,136. We gave 4,500. Rotary North asked for the Galloping Gertie Half Marathon in August. They asked for 20,000. We gave them eight. Harbor Wild Watch put in two applications, one for operations of the Visitor Center at Scansy House. They asked for $20,000 there. We gave them $11,000. That is specifically as we have a tourism assistant coming in that will manage the volunteer process. For their event Chum Fest, they asked for 5,000 for operations. We applied 2,500. The Asia-Pacific Cultural Center applied for the Korean Festival. They asked for $20,000 and needed full funding to make the event happen. We decided to pass on that. For the Gig Harbor Art Center, they applied for the Sister Cities Heritage Day event. And we felt that covered a good amount of, of our focus there. So they asked for 5,000. We gave them three. Metropolitan Glass, also behind Monkey Shines in Tacoma, applied for the Crow Moon Interactive Art Exhibit, which would have left really great pieces of glass art throughout town for people to go and find. They needed almost full funding. We decided that that, that was not something that we were capable of doing this year.
Laura, can I ask a quick?
Absolutely.
A quick question. When you say they, they wanted full funding, any of these groups, was that a question? Or how did you determine that?
So in their application, they either say, we need full funding to make this happen, or it can't happen at all.
And so they understand that by asking for that, you're going to, it's all or nothing, pass, fail. Okay.
They weren't asking for any other groups for support. They said, we need it all from you, or we're not doing it. So we had.
Absolutely, yep. And for this year, to note, we also provided a service in which they could have their application reviewed in advance in case they, they needed any guidance on what our parameters were or best practices and how to present to, to LTAC. The Gig Harbor Canoe and Kayak Racing Team have had two applications, one for Paddler's Cup in April, and one for the Narrows Challenge, which just happened in October. They asked for $17,045 for the Paddler's Cup and $16,045 for the Narrows Challenge. We awarded 5,000 for each of those events. The Peninsula Art League, they came with two applications as well, one for the Open Juried Art Show, which is actually happening now. And then the Summer Arts Festival. We gave a half-fund for the Open Juried Art Show at $3,000. Their ask was six. For the Summer Arts Festival, we decided on a full fund for $4,000. Thank you. For the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, they applied for their farmer's market, which has had been functional throughout the past two years with COVID. They asked for $20,000 and we awarded 17. The Gig Harbor Film Festival, for their 2022 festival, applied for 20,000. We awarded 16. And that was a little bit specifically because they, they've had two years of no operations that we have covered some of their expenses. So we're excited to see that come back and funded them at that amount this year. Any questions? And I'm happy to pull up that, that amount on the screen as well, if you'd like me to go back to that.
I don't want to take up too much time, but can you just kind of give us some guidance on how you determined what you actually gave these organizations, kind of criteria or?
Sure. Well, we took a look at first, the tourism impact that each one would have. Secondarily, what other economic impact the events would bring to the region. We took a look at whether or not they were an innovative form of tourism, or if they had a proven audience that would come back again and again. We took a look at some of the geofencing data to see if that applied and matched with what the application said, how many people were coming over a specific set of dates. And we also took a look at, at what we've funded in the past. We want to make sure that we're not just funding the same events over and over and over again, and that we're getting a more diverse base of events. And that we're also not just focused on what would make the biggest impact for one or two organizations, but equally dispersing that over several, several groups.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions on tourism? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Jeff. I don't know if someone told you that we didn't get to tourism yesterday. You did know that? Okay, good.
Yes, Tony had mentioned it to me.
Okay. Back to page what, 58?
Well, I'm going to actually, let me pause before I give you a page number. I hate to just get paper cuts from flipping pages back and forth, because there's going to be a lot of that today. Apologize in advance for that. Should have asked you to bring your little rubber finger covers. But I just want to make sure, what I'm going to do is I'm going to present a quick overview of how we're going to go through the public works budget, because it does cover so many funds. And hopefully, it, it makes sense. Pretty typical of what we've done in the past. But I'm going to start today by summarizing those objectives that span multiple funds. Most of our objectives are contained in a single fund, but there are some objectives that, whether that's equipment, an actual objective for the budget, or positions that span multiple funds. So I'm going to start off with what we've been calling Public Works General. So these are general expenses across all of, or most are all of public works. And I hit those, because otherwise, you'd see those every time, and we, well, I don't want to have to explain them randomly as we come over, come upon those. So I'm going to give an overview of all operations, items that span multiple funds. I'm going to talk about the items that were removed over multiple funds. And I'm going to talk about one capital objective that is multiple funds, and then we're going to get into individual operation funds and individual capital funds. individual operation funds and individual capital funds. And somewhere in there, we'll take a break.
And we're on page eighty-five?
Well, actually, I'm gonna start on page ninety-seven. That's Parks. I'm sorry, page ninety-seven. I'm already starting. Let me read my own notes. Page ninety-seven, it's Park Division Capital Equipment and Outlay for Operating. Again, I'm just gonna start with the items that span multiple funds here and talk about what we're requesting at this point. So the first one I'm gonna talk about is objective number three on page ninety-seven. Replacement purchase for a brush chipper with a winch. We have an existing brush chipper. It's old. We feel we need a bigger one, a larger one that has a pulley on it. And to to reduce any potential claims of injuries for staff. And I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go through these and get to the end of the section. And then if you have comments, if you can just let me know at that point. And then a new purchase of a material spreader for asphalt. This is something that we we have been hand doing a lot of asphalt repairs, and this material spreader will help us put down patching and potting. It will help us with all of that. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. And so that that's my multiple funds for equipment. I'm gonna go into an objective. And this isn't in your current budget. It's in the previous twenty-twenty-one budget. You probably don't have that with you, but it's the utility rate study. We were thinking that we could, when we published these budgets back at the end of August, we thought we could complete the utility rate study. And we're not able to do that. We are in the middle of our stormwater utility revenue study, but we need to have a study session about that. We're pausing with even moving forward with utility rate study until we get completely through, or at least most of the way through our stormwater utility revenue study. So we're just asking to reallocate the funds that were in twenty-twenty-one budget and move those forward into twenty-twenty-two budget. But that's not showing in your budget book today.
Where would that be in our budget? What page?
Be on page, it's in the twenty-twenty-one budget. Oh, sorry, you're asking me where would it be in the twenty-twenty? It would be under any of, it would be any under the water operating, the stormwater operating and the wastewater operating as an objective. But it doesn't, it doesn't show up there because we didn't, we thought we'd complete it. But I can tell you, if you want to put a note on it, it is in in twenty-twenty-one budget, one of the locations is page one ninety-five. And I can bring that up if you want to see what that looks like. I have, I have the twenty-twenty-one budget open right now.
And what rates, which I I apologize, I'm having kind of a hard time understanding through the math, but what one are you proposed, what rate study are you planning on postponing?
The utility rate study for water wastewater, stormwater rate adjustments for monthly rates and GFC's general facility charges.
Yeah, Ashley has not started on that prop down. I thought he was kind of on that project already.
He did, he has started, but he, we, we, he got started on it and we just said, pause, we need to finish with the stormwater utility revenue study. That's what the utility revenue study was what was presented to the Public Works Committee in October. Not the utility rate study.
And prior to, which I want Dave and Tony supporting this, which I'm sure they will, but prior to the twenty-eighth, we will get you a whole new booklet that shows any changes that have come up to that date. So anything that, you know, just like tourism in this, we will make sure that before the twenty-eighth, you have a new budget book and we will actually say what pages the changes will be on. So you won't have to flip through to find those. There's not gonna be many, but we want to make sure that you, you know, you have the most current.
I appreciate you making note of where the changes are so we don't have to try and figure out what we're looking at here and then slipping something, you know, not slipping something in, but you know what I mean?
And we'll get them in a binder. So I just signed Mike up for a bunch of work, Dave.
Mayor, can we have the same page timbers on them?
Yes.
Because now this per, this budget has all my notes in it and written everything. So I get a brand new one. Not gonna have all those notes.
We can reference, we can reference where the page was. But, you know, Mike, Dave knows that that doesn't work.
In the past, rather than a whole new budget book, because it's quite an endeavor and quite a lot of paper, what I do is take notes. And then I try to highlight the salient points that you discussed and the additions and deletions in the budget bill. So what you have here could be a foundation. And then you can track the changes. And then I also give you any monetary changes. So if you want to look at the original numbers on the preliminary budget, you can see what Dave has in the budget bill, pluses and minuses. And you should come out to the budget number that you're gonna have in the proposed ordinance in front of you.
Thank you. So is that, is it because they're gonna modify the budget after the twenty-eighth? Is it better just to give them the pay a supplement?
That's what I was gonna, I was gonna say, why don't I give you a facsimile of just what I'm talking about? So you can track with what you have now, then you can use your notes.
Yep.
And your things. And then if something doesn't jive, you can ask me why not, and we'll get to the bottom of it and and see if we can get there.
Yeah, and that's better. So we'll give you a supplement of changes for you to work on in your existing book.
Okay. So I'm gonna continue. That was the only objective that spans in operations that spans multiple funds. I'm going to move into positions that in public works that were being requested that span multiple funds. So I'm going to jump to page ninety-nine in your twenty-twenty-two preliminary budget. It should be a staff adjustment request form for an associate engineer.
So. When, when, I'm sorry, but when were we gonna ask questions?
When, when I get to the end of these operations items that span multiple funds, I'm just gonna go through the positions and then I'll be done. Unless you want me to stop now.
No, go through your section like you said. Okay.
Okay, so on page ninety-nine is a staff adjustment request form to add an associate engineer into engineering. Primary need for this is to support capital project development, design permitting, construction of capital projects. As council has seen for the past few years, there is a large list of capital projects that we have to assign to public works. And sometimes we have to just take everything we can and and apply our funding towards consultants to complete these projects. And that can be very expensive on an hourly rate. When you look at how much money we spend on consultants, we could get quite a bit of work done for a lot less money if we have an in-house engineer. And it also saves us from taking the time from that staff has to do to manage consultants. There's quite a bit of time that we, we, even if we hire consultants, it's you still need staff to manage them. And so we think that there's a benefit to bringing some in-house staff on board to help with those capital projects. Right now, we're not proposing to add additional support staff. We think that we have sufficient capacity and support staff to do that, both in administrative staff and in inspection staff. So right now, with one additional position, we think that we can handle that. I'm gonna move on to page one hundred. There's one staff adjustment form for all three of our existing public works field supervisors. Essentially, what what we have here is a request to reclassify our public works field supervisors to become true supervisors. Right now, they supervise tasks of existing operations staff. They don't technically supervise. They don't sign time cards. They don't sign the evaluations of the staff that they supervise. Ken Andrews is responsible for everyone in the operations division. And we're at what now thirty, thirty full-time employees? And so that's, that's a lot. If you've ever managed people, that's a lot of people to have all under your span of control. So we're, and we have these three staff field supervisors who do a great job. We think that we can expand their duties to also include true supervisory positions. There are some negotiations we have to work on with the union. There might be some pay increases. Well, we'll talk about that when we actually, if, if, at the point where we discuss it with the union, and then we can move forward about and then would likely move them from the employees' union into the, into the supervisor. But those are all discussions that we have to take place. But this is just a request to reclassify these positions. And then I'm going to move on to Maintenance Tech on page one oh one. This is, again, it's an operations position funded through parks, streets, water and storm. And I do have the budget in front of me. If anybody wants to see these on the screen, I can at least, if you want to orient yourself to where we are, but let me know. And so we've got a maintenance tech. It's listed here, position title, Maintenance Tech One. I'll get to that, why it's the Maintenance Tech One later, but we have a Maintenance Tech position to support the expansion of operation duties that has happened in the city throughout the past few years. Even back in two thousand seventeen, as noted in the description of the request, there was an efficiency and improvement study done for public works operations that said at that time that we needed to add additional FTEs to keep up with the level of service that was expected by council and residents compared to the staffing levels that we had back then. Since two thousand seventeen, as you know, we have grown significantly with more roadways, more water, more storm infrastructure to maintain, more parks to maintain. And so we only have more duties. So it's spreading us even thinner than we used to be. And our level of service continues to drop. Maybe you see it, but Ken has become creative in trying to at least take the fires and keep them subdued as much as possible. So that that is why we're asking for one additional maintenance. Maintenance Tech is a more skilled level than a laborer. The next position for staff adjustment is a laborer also. But the maintenance, the differentiation primarily between maintenance tech and labor is the maintenance tech has more skills, more. And not at all. Certifications, yeah. And so that's where, that's why we have maintenance. But then we also have, and sorry, I just want, go ahead.
Okay, ahead.
I just wanted to say, just jump on the labor, because it's a quick follow-up to that same. So for the similar justifications on page one oh two, we have our staff adjustment request form for labor number one. This is a less skilled position in the maintenance tech. But for the same justification, we have a level of service that we were set to meet. We're not meeting the level of service. We think if we have one skilled level in the maintenance tech and one less skilled level with mood doing more of the mowing, weed eating tasks, bean labor for, for, you know, shovel operations and that kind of task. And we can be able to have, get some more of the the garbage clean, the restroom cleaning, all of that. And we can be able to fill in where we are lacking now. So that's where we are. I'm gonna pause here. This, that was operations, multiple funds for equipment, objectives and positions.
Question. I have, I noticed that there was a request for a maintenance van. Does this maintenance tech have anything to do with the maintenance van?
Not directly, no. I mean, it's, 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 the maintenance van is not to supply with the maintenance tech. But I'll let Ken, if you want to add on to that at all.
And we'll use for everybody, you know, keeping, keeping things dry, tools dry. When you roll up on a job, you get everything you need.
And I will be going through, as soon as we're through with this, I'm gonna go through the items that were removed from multiple funds and maintenance ban is one of those.
Thank you.
I'm curious, Councilor Robert, Councilor Franch has had his hand up.
Go ahead.
You spoke of growth, and I think some ways of measuring that growth is in miles of new road or something. Think some municipalities might measure that by lane miles. Well, you say the increase in lane miles has been since, I don't know, two thousand, in the last ten years.
Oh, goodness, in the last ten years. I have. I'm gonna pull a number out of my hat here, but I have hard data that goes back from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen. When we did this, the Public Works Operations Efficient Study, we tracked a lot of that data. Lane mile is not just simply things like miles of pipe, number of streetlights, number of garbage cans that we service, all those kinds of things, restroom. But roughly our lane miles since for the last decade have probably gone up about fifteen, twenty percent.
Oh, how many miles that, how many?
Let's see, originally, the number that sticks with me, about eighty. We've probably gone up fifteen, twenty percent.
And the main purpose of streets, for instance, is to maintain the safety, life and safety of those roads.
Yes, yes, yes. That's the sole, that's one of the primary purposes. And and I have to say, a lot of these streets that have been created are, of course, new. They don't require much maintenance. You, we are, there are some streets that we will get to in talking about our operations is the, well, we've got a few streets that are degrading. But right now, we're at the peak of our benefit of not having enough staff because we have a lot of branding infrastructure. Treatment Plant has seen that, and you'll see that for one of the staff requests for the Treatment Plant, is that things are now getting older and starting to break down and requiring more maintenance. Councilor Franch.
Well, are you ready for questions on this section or?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, is your microphone on?
Thank you. So on page ninety-seven. Thank you. The, and and I support the, the both number three and number four. But my only question there was on under number three, where it talks about new equipment will have the ability to handle larger items, provide safety measures for employees who will no longer be required to manually lift or transport materials. Is there some sort of threshold on what, and is this gonna play into some union deal where people aren't gonna be able to lift up branches to put them in? I mean, what? Now, I'm assuming as a normal brush chipper works, you know, you throw the branches in and they. So what policy is setting up what that threshold is?
Well, I'll, I'll start just by giving a simple overview. And Ken, if you think you need to fill in, please do. We're not, if the question is, are we changing job descriptions? Are we reducing the lifting requirements of our staff through this? No, we're not doing that. We're trying to reduce the number of injuries that we have on, by staff or, and just save. And we need a new piece of equipment. So why not get something that's safer and and provides better service for our staff and our community?
The current chipper we have is twenty-eight years old.
Yeah, no, I I think it's a good idea. I'm not.
So the new, the new ones, the new chippers have like an arm that comes out the back with a winch on it. So you can run your line out, winch up to a log, because a lot of stuff we're chipping is this big. It's not branches. And then they'll pick it, drag it and run it right into the machine.
So in the practicality of the way things are doing with smaller branches and brush and what have you, it's not gonna change. Okay. And then on page ninety-nine.
Yes, the associate engineer position.
Right. And I really appreciated the, the description of the request there. But I'm wondering, what steps are you going to take that you are going to achieve the things that are described in that description of request? And specifically for the need for in-house engineering design for capital projects and engineering review of private development for city right-of-way work.
I'm sorry, you're asking for like a, a threshold of or a?
Well, no, I'm just wondering what steps, I mean, because I think that's exactly the type of associate engineer that we need. So we're not paying a consultant to go out and supervise an installation of a sidewalk for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, let me say this, with the staffing we currently have, now granted, we have some staff that have just started mid-year. And so they're still doing a lot of training and getting oriented to city processes. But we anticipate that by the time we are able to hire a new position for an associate engineer, those staff will be trained on our procedures and policies. And in the past, we were able to split one person between private development review and capital projects. Sometimes it was one-thirds, two-thirds. Sometimes it was split the other way, two-thirds, one-third, or fifty-fifty. And so the intent is to be able to bring on one additional person, have them focus on capital projects. And so that means we can get, moving forward, last year, I think we did, we did one in-house design. And so maybe we do three or four in-house designs on some smaller projects. We keep, if you look at our, how many projects objectives in our capital fund, we carried over into twenty-twenty. in our capital fund, we carried over into 2022. A lot of those were smaller ones. Slip lining is one that comes right to mind that we could do in-house, but we just didn't have the staff to do that.
I, I completely agree, and that's why I completely support this position. I just want to make sure that that six months from now, or whenever this position gets filled, that we don't lose sight of this conversation and what we're actually trying to achieve here.
No, I, I, I agree that I, I expect and I hope that council will, when we do our quarterly budget updates and we do our monthly schedule of capital projects of public works committee, that, that that's the questions that you, that you'll be answered at that point. That we'll be saying, what are we now being able to achieve complete now that we have this additional associate engineer? And as you recall, you saw many projects slip, slip, slip. And the goal is that we won't have as many projects or any projects that will slip.
Our staff enjoys designing things. So.
I, I love, I'm against crew. I mean, man, when they're putting in sidewalks and they're, I mean, that is, that is good. I, I just want to make sure that we are perfectly clear because it's easy to lose sight.
That's why he put it in, that's why he put it in there.
Right, but I just wanted to have this conversation. That's all.
Yeah.
Definitely a good one to have. By the way, the, the allocation of this individual, this in-house capability. That's the one thing that I noticed throughout because public works is just spread all over the place in terms of the button. I don't see anything that puts it all back together and says, okay, as like, I'm sure you do because it's public works, sure shop. What kind of projects, how's the allocation process going to work? With let's say inside the, these people that are, that are coming up, that'll be doing in-house work. And those projects that we farm out.
How, how will the decisions be made about which projects stay in-house and which projects get farmed out?
How, how do you get an inside guy versus an outside guy? But in other words, what, how are these things going to be allocated?
It depends on experience is going to be a starting point. I mean, when you look at, for example, list station six design, we don't have staff that can do electrical and mechanical pumping design. So that immediately gets to handed over to a consultant. But there are projects, this, the, the, the annual pavement maintenance. We were anticipating doing that with the consultant, but we can definitely do that with in-house staff. We have the capability and we will have those expectations that that staff that we hire will be able to do projects like that instead of consultants doing them.
Is there any thought to allocating on the basis of the the value of the project, for example, as opposed to the level of experience?
We could. I think that that's a discussion that we have as we proceed into the, into the setup of, of who is doing what with administration, city administrator and the city engineer. That's a bigger discussion with that group. And as you know, every year as we approach the final budget season, Trent and I start to go through and allocate all of our staff and all of the projects that are anticipated to be approved through the budget process to make sure that we are, or to understand where we're going to be having to bring consultants on board or where we can do those in-house. And so we'll continue to do that with the mayor, with city administrator as we proceed.
Okay.
Okay. If it's no more questions.
I, I just have one more quick one. When, when do you think that you will be putting this job out?
My hope is that we will be able to advertise if approved in the budget as soon as the budget's approved and start interviews in January, February. But there's a lot of people that HR is working with to try and bring on board. So we'll, I'm sure we'll get in line.
Thank you. That's going to depend on, you know, how we. Okay.
Okay. Now I'm going to jump over to the memo that Mr. Piesekki presented in, on October 6th via email. It's the remove department remove requests from departments not included in the 2022 budget. I'm going to do that because there are, there's quite a few items in here. The items that are in here for public works mostly span multiple funds. And so I'm trying to get all the multiple fun items out of, out of the way, discuss beginning. So. You received it by email. Do you want to bring it up on screen? Okay, just a second. Let me, let me grab that folder. All right, I closed my outlook so it wouldn't keep dinging me about emails. Let me see here. Hey, it's opening just a second here. Okay, this was sent to mayor and council on October 6th from Mr. Piesekki. I'll just my outlook might start dinging about emails, but we'll get to that. Okay. Is it showing up on your screen? Okay, let me make it a little larger here. Can you see that? Okay. A little bit larger here. Okay, so in that list, the document that Mr. Price I can provided, there were some items that were removed. And so I just want to go over those. These are items that span multiple funds. I'm going to start off with three equipment and two positions. There's the maintenance van that was, was referenced earlier. Request for a minivan to be outfitted with equipment tools to support maintenance tax to task to keep the tools and equipment dry. And this is a new purchase is not a replacement. So, sorry, I'll back up. You, you'll see in these equipment and capital outlay, we identify at the very beginning if we're replacing a piece of equipment and it'll say replacement or adding a new piece of equipment to our inventory. So this is a new piece of equipment we're now replacing. So Ken, I'm going to ask you to speak to that real quick.
We do have a mini, it's kind of a minivan now. It's a 1999 event that we share with planning. So getting pretty ancient, but this fan would help out quite a bit, just, just in hauling materials and tools and go forward on projects. Usually this kind of a thing is going to begin used from we do all our rental properties. And I don't know where the guys can roll up there. They know what they're going to need. They got all their materials done. So.
So how have things been carried around now?
Open truck.
And the van would be better because?
Doesn't get wet.
Okay. So it's basically a dry thing.
Correct.
All right.
You mentioned rental buildings. So in that van would be things that you're commonly going to use to do repairs and maintenance on it.
Homing repairs.
So if you pulled up in your truck, besides being, things being wet, you need a 16 PVC elbows, three quarter, half inch reducer. Now you got to get back in that truck, go get it. But if you had a commonly known things in that maintenance van, you could just walk out of the truck and get it.
Yes.
Also, I might mention, you know, that when it says the mayor and cities manager comments, that's not multiple fleets, just so you know, because these are enterprises that are shared. So that's just one. So, you know, it's just, it's just under different categories each time. So, you know, we've gotten this far now without needing it. We've supplemented, we, we've got some new vehicles every year. Pretty much everything that they weren't, we've almost out, we've almost given them. So, you know, we just feel that there are cab of theirs vehicles where they can, they can put a tarp over it. They've got cabs, they've got cabinets. It's, it's worked and I don't think you give everyone's wish list every single year. You look at what maybe can wait a year or what you've gone by. So Tony, do you want to add anything to that?
I agree with everything that the mayor just said. In addition, if this vehicle could be used for some of the same things that one of the pickup trucks can be used for, maybe it could be a replacement vehicle in the future year rather than a new vehicle.
I think that to call things a wish list is, is not necessarily the proper term. I think, I don't think Jeff would put anything on here that he wishes he had. I think a lot of thought went into what do we need to do the job better and, and more economically and more efficiently. So I don't think you're wishing, are you? You're just, this is what takes to do the job.
The, the list we originally provided is intended to do, is to intended to provide staff with the tools and equipment they need to do their job in an efficient, effective manner.
Thanks.
Also, I never said that didn't, someone didn't put adequate time or thought into this. So just, I don't, I don't think of that when I talk of staff. So I never said that. Well.
Okay. Councilor.
Yeah. So on these figures for like the purchase of the
Can you put your mic on?
For the purchase prices here, how old are those numbers and figures? Because of course, prices have gone up for vehicles.
These are just checked in late summer.
Okay, good. Thank you.
When will, and I guess maybe this is a question for the mayor or the city minister. I mean, is, is it your expectation to have a discussion about these today? Or are we still under the informational?
It's information.
Informational and then at the work study session, we will have the, the debate.
Yeah, it's, it's for them to show their budget. And if there is something that the city administrator and the mayor felt that we needed weight on or something is to, to let you hear their reasons why they would still want it. And then for us to say why we took it out and then later on the 28th for you to make your decision and talk about it.
All right, that sounds good. Thank you.
So, so one thing to keep in mind too, with these vehicles and these equipment nowadays, you just don't buy it. You know, you're lucky to get it. And so, I mean, if we put an order in, it doesn't even start until first of the year. You may not see the truck. And they physically just may not have one for you to buy. So, I mean, it's also something to keep in mind that it might take a year or two to get this stuff. So.
Why is that? I'm sorry.
Yes.
What?
Tips right now, there's no, anyway, let's, you can't. So yeah, so you could put it in halfway through the year in your budget or next year, but there's, there's a chip shortage.
Jeff, are you going to go down each one of these? Yes, I was. Thank you. The, I'm trying to be quick. The next item is a new F350 pickup truck. Includes a snowplow package. We currently have, well, Ken, you can explain how many snow plows we currently have.
So we have four plows. We have two five yard big dump truck ones. One is a 1999, one's a 2000. And they're great for the larger roads, the main veins, the main arteries. The problem we're having nowadays is that the, the new housing developments, the roads are narrow. And then people want to park on the road. Well, we can't take those five yards into the neighborhoods. Or we're going to be buying some cars, you know, so.
I might add the new, the narrow roads have no parking on the sides, on each side of the street. Yeah. So they're redlined.
I wish they didn't park there. So, so we have two of those, two large ones, and we have one kind of a, it's a small truck. It's a 2017. And the other one we call the snowbuster. It's a 2007 Ford truck, which is this truck right here. So we're specking it the same as a 2007. That truck goes anywhere. Uphill, downhill, it doesn't matter. It's the most reliable, best snow pushing vehicle, and I'm not a Ford guy whatsoever. But it does wonderful.
I might add, one reason why we took it out is we actually figured out how many snowplows we have that are not on vehicles that you can still attach. We have, we have snowplows that are not on vehicles that we can put on existing vehicles as well.
So this F350 four wheel drive pickup, it's convertible. It does, it'll provide snow and ice control, meaning you could spray. You put on, take off the snow power, leave it on, but you could spray down ice repellent. So it's a convertible, multi-use truck.
We have units that fit in the bed for spraying for de-icer or salt. You know, we put in the back of them. Yes, sir.
And is there any opportunities to look at hybrid versions of these vehicles?
There is, but I don't think they have them in that heavy duty of a truck yet.
So the one that, this one, you say that there's another one that we have, but it's a 2007.
Correct.
And so what condition is the one that's 2007?
Getting used. Everybody loves that truck. So that's the one they go to. So.
Right.
What can I say?
The more narrow roads that we're talking about are the newer developments in Gig Harbor North, where I think the majority of our population has grown. And they have certain expectations, I would think of what kind of service we're going to get. I think that's why, I, I guess I asked you earlier about the purpose of streets and, and life and safety. And this to me, snowplow, I remember my wife was like three blocks from home and she couldn't get through. She had to walk in the snow up to her waist practically to get home. That was, you know, that's not healthy. So and also besides life and safety, I think there's certain degree of commerce. We also need to make sure that delivery trucks can get in, that Amazon can make the deliveries to those people in those homes. And that the restaurants can get served, you know, get delivered their food in their stores and that kind of thing. So without snow removal at a, at a really efficient rate is going to hurt economically.
Okay. So one thing, so yeah, those are great comments. If we have our opinion, we're never going to get through this. So I agree, I agree. I don't disagree with your comments. I care about our streets. They do a great job. But we're in this, we're in the second part and we did have tourism and it's 330. So if we can hold our comments back to the 28th, have them say their case for the budget, that would be appreciative. And council can help me on this too.
Will they be back? Will Jeff be back on the 28th in case we have additional questions on this?
I know this is, this isn't how we've done it in the past. In the past, actually, we did these at council meetings. So the workday session is with council. In the past, we actually heard from the staff in two sessions and then everything was debated in council meeting. So we're doing a workday session now, but this is the chance to hear from staff. So ask them questions, get information. And then we get, we, that's what they're here for to ask.
I would also suggest that if you have additional questions that come to mind after these sessions, email them to us. We will put together answers and email them back to you all. So if one council member has a question, all the council members will get an answer.
Perfect.
I have one more question, not an opinion. Of those vehicles that we have, do, that they're, two of them are 20 years old, one of them since 2007. Did they ever break down when they're critically needed?
Yes, we had that happen last, last winter. Where we, we actually had to borrow a guy from DOT to come help us fix them to get them on the road that night. Unfortunately, their mechanic teamed up with our mechanic. And we got it back on the road the next night, but when it's snowing, you don't have a lot of time. So.
The next item is a vector truck storage. We have a new vector truck. We didn't realize it until it was too late that we bought the new truck and it doesn't fit in our covered storage. We always keep our vector truck in the winter time in a heated covered storage units because the vector truck has so many water lines on it. It, we, we can't let those water lines freeze because we need to be able to grab that truck and go in the middle of any weather. And so the vector truck is, my understanding, it's too long to fit in our current storage. So this would create a new place to store it in the winter time. If we, if we don't spend the money here, we're going to need to drain the vector truck every night. And that will take additional staff time to drain it every night. And then when we need it in an emergency, we either have to call in an outside company to come in with their vector truck that is full of water and ready to go, or we have to take our time when start the truck and then fill it with water and get all the lines prepped. And my understanding from talking to Ken and Daryl, that takes about 20 minutes to do. And so when you have an emergency, time is money. But we, we, that's the alternative that we have at this point.
I, when we talked about this, I thought you said you were able to put the vehicle into one of the bays at a little bit of an angle and it would fit.
It'll fit in the bay, but it's not enclosed and it's not heated. It's an open air building. So if it freezes, then the valves and the pumps on this truck, they're going to break.
But it won't fit in a heated. But it won't fit in a heated bay?
No, it'll fit in, it'll be undercover. We have a covered area that will fit.
But it'll freeze.
Could we not just get a rental storage thing and stick it in there for a couple of months out of the year?
We would have to meet design review board requirements. We would have to meet design review requirements for the city. And I don't think that that, we would, that those would not be allowed to be used.
Like a self-storage or something like that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant pop-up tent.
No, I'm saying like, you know, like on highway sixteen, there's a storage facility.
We can look into that if, if.
We've got a, a storage facility going in on each side of shop right now. That, that will uh, be built.
On the operations center?
Yep.
It, it's not covered and heated for a piece of equipment this size. But we could, we could look, if this is, if uh, we can look at that as an alternative, see if there's a covered heated uh, facility that we could rent during the winter time that will fit the piece of equipment.
So I'm assuming that you, we use the vector quite a bit in the winter, during freezing weather?
I, I don't know if we use it quite a bit. If you were to take the hours that we use it, I, I don't know if we'd have very many hours on it. But we do have plugs in the sewer system and the storm system that happen at all hours.
Well, is there a log of how often that truck gets used in the winter?
I, I could ask Daryl and Ken to provide that log.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna say, cause last winter was a pretty significant snow event type winter. Uh, and we did a great job, my own comment, but I mean, just extrapolating from last year, how much time do we put on, how many hours do we put on those vehicles? Do we have an idea?
Uh, yeah, we can find that out. Um, and, and the intent is that the, the, the vehicle needs to stay there, ready to go. And ready to just turn the key and go. Um, and even if it doesn't snow, even if the weather forecast is for lows in the high twenties, highs in the forties, you still have to keep that equipment from freezing in the middle of the night. So there might not be any snow ever. And the equipment could still freeze and break valves and hoses and pumps.
The storage rooms, the storage that are going on either side of the operations center, is it possible to have one of those that's heated or, or are those already in use, designed for a particular use?
On the new operations center site, there is no additional. There's just the interior building office space. So the.
She meant that they're not built yet, but she meant the storage facilities that are being built on either side.
Oh, I'm sorry. It, it, coming into eighty ninth street.
Right.
You're, uh, I, I don't know. That's a good question. If, if they have that size of facility, then we could, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think Tony and I thought for forty thousand, you know, maybe, maybe we park it sideways. Maybe we put a blanket over it. Maybe there's some options we should look at. So.
All right, I'm going to move on to staffing adjustments. So um, as, as noted, we already went through a maintenance tech and a labor for operations that was in the uh, budget, the preliminary budget. There was also a, and this says labor number one, and then the next one says labor number two in the document that Mr. Price, I keep provided. Or sorry, maintenance tech number one. This should be labor number two, maintenance tech number two. So operations requested two labors, two maintenance techs. What is moving forward in the preliminary budget is one labor, one maintenance tech. And labor number two, labor, maintenance tech number two are uh, in the uh, items that were not uh, moving forward in the preliminary budget. And um, generally, we, staff supports that. We had a discussion, the mayor and Mr. Price, I can I about uh, the fact that we have quite a few vacant positions, labor and maintenance tech in operations right now, and we can't even staff those. So the idea here was to bring forward, um, and I, and Mr. Price, I could believe noted that here. Um, yeah, that we'll go ahead and we'll fill the vacant positions, will be, if supported in the budget, will fill the two new positions. Labor one, maintenance tech one, and then see where we are at that point. If we still think that, you know, a- after that, there's more need for more FTEs, then we can come to council next year, mid biennial budget amendment, or just end of the year for the twenty twenty-three budget and do that analysis at that point. So that the staff understands and supports that. So, um, I've got, th- that's all of the option, items that were removed from operations. I'm going to go ahead and move into the one last objective that spans multiple funds. And I'm on now page one twenty-five. Public Works Operations Center. So, um, this is something that you've seen, uh, the, the, the project itself, you've seen uh, multiple years in a row. This objective is to actually construct the building itself. We are approaching the end of the design. We have, uh, I think it's ninety percent design in our hands. Uh, staff has made comments back, consultant is uh, updating that document. We are getting ready to submit for a building permit hopefully in November. And then we can go, once we get a building permit approved, we can uh, go out to bid. And hopefully award a contract next spring for construction and have construction completed before next winter. So this objective would build that facility and furnish it.
Is this the, I don't have my twenty twenty-one budget. What was budgeted for this building and?
It, it was not, it was not, the bu- the building itself was not budgeted in twenty twenty-one, just the design and permitting.
All right.
So. And Jeff, as far as the dollars to actually build the building, have we done a new engineer's estimate to make sure that we are budgeting enough?
Uh, we have, we, we're getting one with the final version of the estimate that's provide, or with the, with the construction documents that's supplied by the consultant.
And if we need to modify this number, we'll let council know, but it's been a very irritating to all of us to have a budget set for a project and have it come in. Sometimes a lot over. So I'm glad that we're going to have some reasonably good numbers. So at least we know how much money we would be spending on this project.
So how old is that three point three estimate?
Two years old.
Wow.
I'm guessing it's going up.
Uh, we, well, I, I, I'm sorry. I, that three point three million number includes furnishings, the, the building itself amount. I'd have to go back and look. I increased all of these projects by uh, from the, at least five percent. So it very well could go beyond that.
Correct me, uh, this building is something that we've been wanting to build for a while. And we've been postponing it, is that right?
No, we've been, we've, you know, no, it was, it was uh, originally, design was originally initiated in two thousand and seven. The downturn in the economy stopped it completely. And then um, when, uh, about four years ago, in that budget, there was funding set aside to finish the design and permitting, and then we constructed the site development. And so we've been doing it in stages to try and minimize the impact and to be reasonable in what we can complete in one year. So we, we've complete, we, we went through a site assessment in that process. There was a discussion um, about maybe we weren't selecting the right location. So we paused everything after the economy rebounded and then we've gotten to this point.
We've got half the whole cost of the building, the whole thing is, is in the infrastructure of the, of the site, and that's all done. So we've been, you know, since two thousand and eighteen, we've worked hard to move forward on this project.
So the intent here is to occupy the building by the end of the year?
Occupy the building by the end of twenty twenty-two, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all that I have for objectives, equipment, and positions that span multiple funds. So now I was going to jump into uh, the city's operations funds. And so with that, unless there's any questions, I'm going to say, please proceed to page one ninety-five. That's wastewater operating. Again, I have it up on the screen if you'd like to see the screen. If you don't, just be careful.
I'm sorry, what was the page?
One ninety-five. I hope, I hope, I hope. Yes. Wastewater operating. We have an arc flash analysis. This is something an LNI requirement. There's, it seems quite expensive to complete. It is quite expensive to complete. This will identify what else we need for works, workspace constraints and PPE that needs to be purchased to meet uh, all electrical requirements. Second item is vessel, vessel pumpout services. This is something that was introduced uh, in September. Um, we used to have a vessel pumpout service that was supported in part by a grant from the state. That grant went away. The vessel pumpout went away. There's a vessel pumpout back in the city. You have to pay for your vessel pumpout. And this would um, by the city participating in this, it would provide free vessel pumpout for uh, as noted here, every Saturday, Sunday and holiday, May twenty-two, May through September of twenty twenty-two.
That sounds, looks like boating season to me.
So um, at this point, I'm, that's all I have for wastewater. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Now let me jump into the wastewater operating um, objectives. Sorry. Uh, we're now on the page. Go ahead.
On that uh, vessel pumpout service?
Yes.
Where, when it, that was never provided for except by the state grant previously?
No, the city paid fif- I think it was fifteen thousand dollars a year for vessel pumpout services that were, but when the state grant had it, that, that was uh, the state paid, I think, three quarters of the amount. The city paid twelve and a half percent and the local marines paid the other twelve and a half percent. But that was um, every day uh, of the year, the vessel pumpout service was provided.
Well, from my perspective, this is something that should have come out of a fund other than the wastewater, the, the utility rate payers of Gate Harbor. This is something that should be come, come out of uh, hotel motel tax or parks. Not, not the wastewater treatment fund, but we'll have that discussion on the twenty-eighth.
Uh, and I, I just want to make sure I keep hearing the twenty, is that October twenty-eighth? Okay, and I'm not, I'm not going to be available, so. Okay, um, I'm going to continue down wastewater operating to equipment outlay. It's the next page, uh, one ninety-six. Uh, service vehicle. That's requested here to replace an existing service vehicle. And then the next one, a new purchase for a utility vehicle at the plant. This is an electric vehicle. It's a much smaller vehicle than our standard vehicles. Uh, but because we have very tight constraints to get into some of these areas, the intent of this vehicle is that it would be a, um, it'd be licensed for the road, but it would spend most of its life at the treatment plant. Right now, uh, whenever we have to lift heavy equipment around, we have to pull in uh, pickup trucks, but they can't get everywhere around the plant. If you've been around the plant, you know there's some tight corridors. This vehicle will be small enough to fit in there. If you've ever seen uh, these small little uh, pickup trucks that don't even look like they should be licensed for the road, that's what we're talking about, but they're electric. Okay, and then I'm going to jump down to the um, the, the staff adjustment. So now I'm on page one ninety-eight. I'm sorry, I'm on page one ninety. All right, let me back up. Ignition wastewater. Sorry, that's page two hundred. So this is an additional position that is being requested to be funded solely through wastewater funds as a maintenance technician. Um, this position is, as you read here, is to um, provide the support for all of the maintenance tasks that are being, uh, that are coming up at the treatment plant. Now that the plant is ten plus years old. Um, as we said, those equip, those pieces of equipment are starting to need maintenance that they didn't need when they were brand new. This would be the only new position that has uh, been added to the wastewater utility, other than an administrative position uh, since two thousand and nine, I believe. And you can imagine how much we've grown since two thousand and nine, additional list stations, additional miles of, of sewer. So um, without this, uh, we'll need to be able to hire, we'll be requesting to hire we'll have to have out consultants or contractors from uh, out of staff to come in and do some of the equipment and support for, or hire flaggers that would need to come in and support our existing staff when we need flaggers. So um, but we want to be able to bring someone in from within our group so that we don't have to do training and we uh, have a more reliable schedule to work on.
And they would stay in just that department?
Stay within wastewater only. Hey, there's no questions. We'll move on to parks operating, page two sixty-eight. That's not right. It's gotta be one sixty-eight. Sorry, let me triple check this. It's not. That's way too far down. Let me get you a new number here. Dave or Ken, do you have a new number? Uh, parks operating, here we go.
Close to two forty-four.
Ninety-three. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that might be it.
Okay. Ninety-three. Okay, sorry about that. Ninety-three. I don't know how I got that number. Back to the beginning. I'm sorry.
Sorry, we all can hear so well with these masks.
We're really close. Okay, and first of all, apologize, the numbering's off. Uh, objective, the objective start at five. Uh, skate park, security cameras. This is something we're going to continue to go after a grant for. Uh, native vegetation plantings. This is something we've been doing and have a good uh, a, a good, um, what am I trying to say?
Every single year.
Yeah, every single, yeah. And so we're, we're doing this on a routine basis. That's what I'm trying to say. Uh, and so we're just going to be looking at planting native trees and shrubs throughout the city. Uh, park asset reservation software, something we've continued to want to do. Um, and as we continue to have more and more assets in our parks, uh, develop, we want to be able to put that into reservation software because it's very clunky and very time consuming for staff to deal with this on the existing system that we have. Uh, recycling program is something that's been carried over. Uh, we wanted to get a, a education program and uh, get together with the local um, businesses and waste collector to be able to collect and recycle materials here in the city of Gate Harbor. Next one is uh, twenty twenty-two Parks Recreation Open Space Plan Update.
No question. Do we have that in two, twice? Cause we had the recycling program yesterday.
We actually have both numbers, the numbers here, seven and eight uh, in the parks.
Okay, so that's, you're only going to see, because so let's.
We, we, we need to leave it in one and take it out of the other. I would say take it out of these and put it in, leave it in the parks program that's part of admin.
Yeah, we had in yesterday's discussion.
And I apologize, I's the one, I'm the one that went through the budget and pulled out all the parks management stuff that needs to go into admin and I missed a couple of things, so.
Take it out of admin and put it, leave it in here.
Take it out of where it is here, parks and leave it in admin.
Okay, yeah, please let me up. Okay, really? You'd rather have it? Okay.
You'd rather have them?
I'd rather have them in parks, but kind of probably get parks initiated, but I don't care.
But they're doing the work.
Maybe we can just work that out. I mean, the, the key is the money's there.
Yeah.
How it gets implemented.
Yeah.
Well, between operations and admin, we can figure that out. But wherever you want to do it, I, I just have it currently in this one. Uh, pros plan update, we're not going to finish that. We didn't think we'd finish it, and so we're just carrying over some of the money. This isn't increasing the scope of conservation techniques or anything. It's just carrying over money that we, we're hoping to finish.
And that one's also in the park admin.
Uh, forty thousand dollars to resurface backs, basketball and tennis, pickleball courts that are in dire need of them. Uh, Christian Trail etiquette and speed signs is something we've been talking about for a while, and there's eighteen thousand dollars to provide those new signs. Um, I'm going to skip the arts commission portion of parks operating, uh, unless anybody, I, I don't have any involvement in that, and I don't know.
And we went through that yesterday.
Jeff?
And that went fine.
Okay, great. Jeff? Yes, before you leave page ninety-three?
Yes.
Uh, under number seven. Is that ten thousand dollars? Is that the annual subscription expense or what, what does that represent?
Uh, no, that's just to develop and, and, and get the asset reservation software in place. Uh, it would require an, an ongoing annual subscription on top of that, once it's in place.
So.
We, we don't know how much that would be.
Did you explore other op, I mean, how many? Did you explore other op, I mean, how many options did you explore to, I guess, remedy the problem that you apparently are experiencing with the existing reservation system?
The existing reservation is calling our, calling our clerk at the, at the planning or the public works, um, you know, and that's it. And, you know, with the, with the kayak and with the Red Brick House and others, we have to, we have to develop a program. And one was thirty thousand. We didn't like that. So this is something we have to get to, but it's just, it's just a placeholder for the price. It's not the time to do it, which we can find someone and we're just trying to, and it's not the subscription, as he said. It's just the, the software and the, and the system to make it work, but it's, it's going to take a deeper dive.
Okay, so you have, you did explore, look at some options and came up.
They did.
It, it, yeah, it was, uh, initiated with Josh's support, what, two years ago, three years ago? It was about two years ago. We worked on it with Nicole when she was on. Um, and we actually have figured out that our city website that we currently host can probably manage this for free. Um, but not having a parks manager, we haven't been able to implement it for a year and a half.
But once we have our park manager, we can get back to like this recycling and this and lots of things.
All right.
But that's great. Yeah, Josh worked on that.
I have a quick question. Sorry. Because you're not going to be here next week, so I'm not advocating, I'm just asking, is there anything that we could be doing on the sports complex next year? Cause I don't think I saw it in the budget anywhere.
Oh goodness, I hope it's under Parks Capital.
Yeah, it is. We're permitting it.
Oh, good. Okay, just wanted to make sure it was in there somewhere.
Yeah, it's, it's in the capital budget for capital projects versus the capital budget for purchasing vehicles and equipment.
Okay.
So we're, we're permitting and even though I said we're not talking about other things, we, we just had a talk with Charlie yesterday and Charlie from the Y M C T A is thrilled. And they've already gone out for donors and they just got a large, a large donor that they weren't experiencing, anticipating. And we're lighting up a meeting with Councilman Markley, myself and Tony to talk to Charlie Moore. So they're doing good. And I'm sorry, I will look this way too. I apologize for looking that way. I like, I like the lies. Keep them coming. I like the comments.
Okay, I'm going to proceed on to page ninety seven. This is capital equipment and outlay. We talked about items three and four already. I'm just going to start with one and two. This is Spinner Toy at Civic Park. If you've been past the Civic Center Play Park here, you'll notice the Spinner Toy in our ground is no longer there. Uh, it has been at a state where we didn't, it was not usable for quite a while, so operations has removed it and we just need to replace that with a new Spinner Toy. Uh, next item is a new purchase of a mowing tractor that we currently have one of, correct? You know, we currently have one of these and it works very well. And so with more and more square footage of grass coming up, we need to make sure that we are, keep on top of that. Okay, uh, that's it for parks operating that we didn't cover in the multiple funds. So any questions on parks operating at this point? All right, I'm going to jump to city buildings. Let me triple check on the number before I give you wild goose chase. Thank you, one oh five. So some of these items you'll see, recognize as carryover. We talked about the fact that we've carried over a lot. So one of those is Civic Center HVAC system.
Sorry, what page?
One oh five. Uh, Civic Center HVAC system. We can no longer use our twenty two refrigerant. We're, we're supposed to have completed a study to, this year to be able to identify what path forward we're going to be using. We still haven't completed that. Um, and so we need to complete that study to make sure that we understand which path forward, how we're going to upgrade our HVAC system and then after do that, then we'll look to get a contract out to do the work. Uh, next item, replace building access control system. Again, carryover from previous year. Swipe card system somehow continues to work even though it shouldn't be. It's very old. And we're looking to have a much more updated access control system to this building, operations building and wastewater treatment plant. We've been working together as a team with operations, H R and I T to implement something that will work for everybody. And so when we get new employees, we can immediately add them on proximity cards once they hand them to them. And for when employees leave employment, we can immediately shut them out of the system at the click of a button on a computer. So that's what the system would provide us. Uh, next item is Bog Visitor Center Building Rehabilitation. Uh, we've talked about this a little bit through the lease amendment of the Bog Visitor Center with Chamber. Uh, this would be replacing, um, the roofing, which also requires us to re-inslate the building and meet current code and then replace the HVAC unit. So we've set eighty five thousand dollars there to do that. And then electric vehicle charging station, as noted here, State of Washington requires all local governments to, um, essentially transfer its equipment and motor pool over to one hundred percent biofuels or electricity where, where possible. And the city here has none right now. And so we need to be able to get ready for having electric vehicles. Um, I'm not sure if there's any, and we don't have any in public works budget. I'm not sure if others have electric vehicles or electric hybrids, but we're looking to put in a charging station here at City Hall for city vehicles.
And community development, as you remember, is, is said they're going to purchase a new vehicle and came out as a replacement or not, and it will be either electric or hybrid.
But we're working towards that.
Yep. All right, uh, let me double check. I think that's it for city buildings. Yeah, that's it for city buildings. Councilman Franch.
So, uh, on number three, you know, it's been an item that's been talked about for several years. And several years ago, we were talking about the possibility of having the public works crew do the re-roughing. Is that come off the table for any particular reason?
Lack of staff. Basically, we can't really devote that many people to that building.
I also might say.
Projects, you know?
It's more complicated because first thing we have to do it this year because, you know, we, we strongly put in the chamber lease and, you know, there, there's a crawl space there that has to have, uh, air can, uh, heating system in it and you have to put more insulation and so it's, it's not just a matter of a roof.
Okay, I'm going to move on to streets operating. Let me double check the number. I think I have one fourteen.
One ten. Well, actually, uh, one, you're right, one, one, fourteen.
Okay. First item is, is typical. It's something we have every year on call engineering transportation assistance. And so it's fifty thousand dollars, a little more than we anticipated, than we've done in the past, but we have quite a few areas that we were, are going to be looking at, uh, doing some on-call transportation engineering assistance.
All right, Jeff, what page?
One fourteen. And again, I could put on the screen if it would help. Then you'd have to watch my scrolling. All right, item number two is annual payment maintenance and repair. This is something that was put off this year because of, uh, lack of staff capacity. Uh, and we have added to it also, Ken's crew has looked at Wood Hill uh, and seen quite a bit of degradation there. That was an old county road, Chip Seal Road that has, uh, gotten to a point where it needs to be, uh, completely rehabilitated for most or all of that section that's in the city west of Burnham Drive. And then as discussed previously, when we were talking about annual payment maintenance last spring, uh, we're looking at now adding the Olympic and Point Fosic Drive intersection.
Jeff, have you looked at these to the point where you know which of the treatments they're going to be and that the two and a half million dollars will be enough to do everything that's indicated here?
Yes, yes, that, that's, Trent and his crew did that and that's my understanding.
Okay.
Yep. And it includes, and I know we've talked about this in the past, but includes all ADA improvements, which are a large percentage of the cost. So, Councilor, or, or, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, the, in our, in our quarterly budget, um, that we've been looking at, the annual payment maintenance had been one point two million. Now it's going up to two point five.
Yes, we added Wood Hill and we added the intersectional Olympic and Point Fosic and then costs going up have caused the total project.
Essentially, since we didn't do it this year, we're just carrying over the money we didn't spend this year to the next year and then we added a bit because of inflation.
Didn't we put up chip ceiling two years ago?
We did.
And planned on doing it to next year because it would be cheaper?
Nothing's cheaper anymore.
Nothing's cheap, yeah. And I think the cheap, the, the less cost is going to be the, uh, mobile, the, the actual contractor showing up on site and he could do two different streets or sections at the same time. Uh, we'd save some money there, but that didn't work out, so. I hope we, uh, we get it done this year so we don't have any more increases in cost.
Yes, agreed. Uh, next item was a carryover from last year, also public works standards update. I'm sorry, Councilman Franch.
So I remember last year when we, um, well, we didn't do it this year, but when we were deciding what streets needed to be, have, uh, it was a street on the library and, um, I forget what the other street was, but is there a reason that, um, this didn't come to the Public Works Committee to review the, uh, uh, I, I don't, have we, do we have, have we updated the pavement rating system? Have we done that survey this year?
Uh, half of the city has been updated this year. This was brought before the Public Works Committee, I believe, in May. And that was the decision at that point to add additional roads. And we, and we thought we would be able to get it completed in this, in twenty twenty one, but we didn't. So we didn't add anything to it from that point forward. And so it didn't go back before the Public Works Committee to see if anything else needed to be added. That isn't recommending, but if you'd like it to go before the Public Works Committee, before budget, we could put it on to the November meeting and have that discussion.
I'll talk to you about that.
Um, you know, really, three years ago, we, we knew a couple of streets could wait and we were going to wait and make it less expensive by adding a few more streets and then doing more. And then we were all ready to do it and then, you know, then we haven't got to it. So we, you know, we, we all wish this was done. We've added more streets to this, so that's partially why the figure went up. But yes, I mean, we are, uh, with a, with a C I P sheets we have and the quarterly things we have, council can monitor this so they can make sure that this happens next year.
Thank you. Um, item three, public work standards update. We're at a point where we feel, um, we, we need to get this done if we, and again, we just had limited staffing capacity, but, uh, next year we have this on our, uh, priority list to complete and we feel with the staff, we can complete it.
Thank you. I think that's really important to get this completed.
Yeah, uh, and just, just as a clarification, I mean, staff has always suggested that we wait four years before we update public work standards and that'll be four years at this point, so, you know. Uh, on-street parking code development, again, carryover from last year, uh, just to update parking standards, codes within the public right-of-way and, uh, support, provide code changes, uh, to support police enforcement.
Let's get a quick question back on page one ten, where it says under city roadways, update the city's G I S mapping system with additional street name and directional signage.
Yes.
How is this used? Like, who can see that?
Uh, we have fifty five licenses, so all of operations, wastewater, all of, well, all of public works and some individuals in other departments, but it's all city employees.
So it's an internal?
Yes, yes, and I, I don't want to get too far, but for twenty twenty three, uh, Mike Simmons and I are already anticipating that we're going to have a public G I S available to provide the public access to some of our layers.
Cause I've, I've had a couple of people comment how cool it would be if you could show the city parking spaces because, you know, there's some hidden back and I don't know how the public would access that easily, but I was just going to add parking would be awesome, but only for a public interface.
Yes, yes, and Mike is actually working with downtown waterfront lines to identify those.
I'm sure that's where the idea came from. Perfect, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to move on to, uh, within streets operations, the capital and equipment outlay. That is on the next page, one fifteen.
Uh, Jeff, just excuse me real quick for you, on page one sixteen. The transfers in of four point seven million?
Yes.
That includes the, the, the two point five, I'm assuming for the street maintenance and the, what, page one fourteen doesn't add up to that. So where else is that four point seven million dollars captured?
It's coming from the general fund and that is used to balance this fund. We put in all the needs, we take in the beginning balance and whatever's left, the general fund takes care of.
Right, so the, but, so where does the, the, I, I, uh, and looking at page one fourteen that lists the narrative of objectives with the, with the costs associated with them, where else is the, the, that doesn't add up to four point seven million, so I'm, where else?
If you turn, if you, if you turn to page one seventeen and one fourteen are contained therein, we don't itemize the salaries, the benefits. We, we don't itemize each piece of equipment or, or each supply needed.
Oh.
So one fourteen is embodied within this and, and the more important items out of page one seventeen are summarized on page one fourteen.
Okay, so one seventeen correlates with one, one sixteen.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just the revenue and expense for the fund. And when you look at one seventeen, you'll see, right, salaries are up a hundred and fifty, benefits are up a hundred and fifty, yeah, a hundred and fifty, supplies up two hundred. And then there's the additional amount to make sure we get all of the, uh, pavement repair stuff done as well in the two point nine. So I mean, the good news is you end up with a healthy fund balance at the end of it all.
And, well, now that you're asking that, wh- what has led to the under services going from one point seven to two point nine?
That would be the additional, uh, street maintenance and paving.
The, pardon me?
That's the additional objective, uh, da, 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 da. What was it? Number two.
Additional street maintenance and paving and overlay and chip ceiling.
There's a million dollars added just in that one objective.
Well, I'll, it's still not quite clicking with me, but I'll take, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you offline.
I, I have a work seat. I can, I can show you real quickly.
All right, thank you.
All right, um, I, actually, I was going to jump to page one fifteen, but those are the two objectives that we already looked because.
Already talked about those.
Yep, so I'm going to now go to, and if there's any questions on street operating, we're going to water operating. Hey, water operating, I believe is on one page one eighty five. We'll double check that. One eighty five, thanks. Okay. I'm sorry, what's up?
We'd say the page again?
Page one eighty five. Okay, the first item on this objective for water operating is, uh, well generator servicing, ten thousand dollars. Uh, water sampling stations, uh, replace aging sampling stations, ten thousand dollars. Uh, water tank tie-downs and vent replacement for two tanks that we have, one over at the Shurgar storage, next to well three, next to Cushman Trail, the one you see from the highway, the whole blue one. Uh, and the Grandview water tanks, both of those, so increase safety around those. Uh, and then the Shurgar tank repainting, what color do you want to paint it? No, it's not a question for today, but. So that's, that's on the agenda for this, for this year. Uh, well, number five and six, uh, near North Creek Lane, uh, is a new chlorine room to keep it outside of the existing wellhouse. Uh, well, number six, video inspection. We've been trying to pull our wells, uh, on a fairly routine basis now and do video inspections of the screens. This is how we found the issue at well number three. We had to completely abandon that. We sure hope it's not the same type of issue here, but anyway, it's a good idea, good maintenance practice to routinely video inspect those. Uh, North Creek Lane well maintenance, this is going to be a little more in-depth, uh, inspection and, uh, some, to actually replace some of the components of the well itself. Uh, and then, uh, item eight, harbor master lane water main replacement, uh, in-house design, in-house operations crew to complete it. Um, we like to be able to do some of these projects on a routine basis, so we keep our skills up. So in the middle of the night, when we have a water main break, crews. So in the middle of the night, when we have a water main break, crews remember, it becomes easy to remember exactly what we're doing instead of having to teach new people how to do that, so. Uh, and then well number three, uh, variable frequency drive, VFD, uh, we just installed this, oh, well, well, this year. We replace it with in-kind, um, but we, in order to not exceed our water rights, we have to take a valve and tighten the valve and slow and not be able to have the full flow that comes out of that pump. That's hard on a pumping motor to have them pushing against that much head all the time. So by inserting this VFD, we can just slow the pump down instead of trying to keep back pressure against it. It's a cost savings in the long run.
So are we not getting the flow out of that, that?
No, we're getting too much flow. We're, we have the ability to pump beyond our water rate. And so we have to tighten down the pump, the valve on it, so we don't exceed our water rate. And that's not, that's not okay, that's that's hard on the on the pumping motor. So like the the well will produce like twelve hundred gallons a minute, but our water rate is only a thousand. So we have to lower our flow.
All right.
So it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's just this, this, this will allow us to slow the the amount of flow that comes out of the pumping motor without damaging or creating long-term issues with the pumping motor. That's my average all.
Now, I I just realized I have no idea how the water gets into this water tank storage, or where the water come from. So is continuously a flowing thing or?
No, it it depends on tank levels. The the there's a communication system called SCADA Supervisor Control and DAX Data Acquisition. Uh, that talks to, that we have a big computer and it talks to all, every one of the wells, every one of the tanks and lets us know where tank levels are. And it calls for water at certain pump levels at pump times. It's quite in-depth, happy to go over it with you if you want.
In simple terms, it's like the float in your toilet.
Right, I mean, yeah.
But it's, it's got a few more pieces to. Or chips.
Just a few, just a few.
All right.
So Jeff?
Yes.
On number, item number four, uh, that seems awfully cheap. I mean, I I I can remember, I I I seem to recall that we've spent upwards of over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repaint water tanks in the past.
Thank you, that seems very inexpensive to me. I might, I I'm gonna double check on that. I sure hope we didn't miss a zero, but it could be, that's very inexpensive to to paint a water tank.
Paint them all.
Action and uh. Make, see if we need to paint it.
Pardon me?
This might be just to see if we need to paint it. You know what I'm saying?
E- either way, we will change either the narrative to say inspection, or we will change the dollar amount to reflect a true repainting of interior next year. Thank you. That's all I had for water operating, we already covered the capital equipment and outlay. So I'm going to move to stormwater operating, this is the last operating fund, and then if you're okay, we can take a pause, Ken can leave and Trent will arrive. Stormwater operating, we're on page two eighteen, I believe. Um, yes, page two eighteen. Uh, two simple objectives, these are two objectives we routinely have. One is local source control program, this is just what we need to do to complete all of our objectives for NPDS permit from Department Ecology. Uh, and then stormwater management site development manual update. Um, we are required by our permit to have a new manual in place by August first of twenty twenty-two. So we're looking to have a consultant come onboard and help us develop it.
So i- is number one sort of some sort of new regulation?
No, I'm I'm pretty sure it's in our every annual budget, the only reason it's not a line item. And it's a true objective is because of the dollar amount, but let me see, I'm almost certain it's in every year budget. It was in last year's budget also, twenty-five thousand dollars, it's just ongoing to do community outreach and police control sources.
Okay, it just threw me off because the first three words, the city to enter in, it's just renewing, we're not entering to something new.
Um, that could be, I I can double check with Trent or Bree. Not Bree for a while. Okay, any questions on stormwater operating? The capital outlay is the same too that we already covered. Okay, so that covers our operating funds, um, I'm gonna ask for a quick pause, and then we'll switch into the capital.
Right, so now we have our ten-minute break. Just looking forward ahead, but I think this is going really well as far as the in-person, I'm talking to council. So just so everyone knows.
I didn't.
I think this is going really well, so after Monday night's Zoom council meeting. I would be supportive of doing our work sessions in here, and then the chamber meetings in here as well. So um, you know, we have to check with court for Tuesday, we have a work session Tuesday. Um, but it doesn't start till, I don't know, three thirty or something.
After the council meeting?
Yeah, not the council meeting, from then on. No, I mean, not, not Monday night, Monday night would be a Zoom, Monday night would be a Zoom.
If it's after, you need to have a cocktail.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. But I I like seeing everyone, I like the in-person, and so if council's supportive, we'll do a Zoom Monday night for the council meeting. And then we'll try to make uh, the study sessions and the council meetings in the chamber, if you're supportive of it.
So, Rowan said something, and and I sort of agree, she said she misses not being able to see people. Is there any way we could set up some tables down there and still use a microphone system so that we could actually see each other instead of? For the work.
Sure, sure, this was actually open to the public and no one showed up, so I think we could do that. Now, chamber, we probably, the council probably. Yeah, for the work session, we could get space between, we could do that, so we can all see each other.
Yeah, I think that would be nice.
So is, unless I hear any?
I think this is way more productive doing these meetings this way, I.
Right.
If it is, if it meets all the requirements of the state and and.
Thank you so much.
And I bring a couple masks, so I can change to my other mask halfway through, you know, so it doesn't overheat.
So. So mayor, the one thing to think about is uh, virtue, meetings like this are supposed to be hybrid. So people are listening uh, on the phone if they so choose. And our rules for regular meetings do call for public comments, so if we're doing a regular meeting, we need to make sure that we can.
Sure.
Include those who are at home, who are listening and want to comment on things.
Sure, and and we were, the one meeting we had about three months ago, we were able to do that. We were able to, we wasn't here, and we were able to have people call in. So um, so that sounds great, we'll do, uh, we'll, we'll plan that way, great.
Good, maybe it's one of our new council members who proposed. Council candidates, council candidates.
Your honor, we're, we're ready to jump into the capital budget.
Okay, let's go, go ahead and start the recording, please. Oh, we're back in session for our uh, city council study session, and we're down to streets capital.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just want to start off by giving you a quick overview, as you've seen in this year's preliminary budget, we have tried something new. We've added an appendix that is solely capital budget. That appendix is essentially identical to what the funds listed in the main body of the preliminary budget are for capital. But the appendix has more information than what's in the main budget document. So what, and I'll go through the appendix today because it has more detailed information. What we're gonna propose, and what I'd like you to think about is the fact that we are gonna propose that we don't even include any capital in the main budget document, we just have our capital budget.
Yes, so so there'll be a really good divide that first section of the budget is operating stuff and the purchasing of equipment. I know we call it capital, but it's really purchasing of equipment. And then when it comes to actual cap- capital projects, where we're building something or requiring property. All the things that Jeff is about to go over here, that will be in a separate section of the budget, so you can easily go from one to the other. And it doesn't get all mixed in and lost, particularly capital projects, sometimes reviewing this, this budget document, it can be hard to find them sometimes. So if you know they're all in the back half of the budget or the document, I think that'll be easier for people to follow.
Okay, so I'm going to um. Go through this, and I'm going to, uh, but I'm gonna start with the map that I just handed out. It's my, I I I wasn't sure if you had a full-size version of this, well, an eleven-by-seventeen version of this map. Um, this is a summary of all of the capital objectives, the, from streets, arcs. Water, wastewater, water and storm, so those five funds. Uh, and then I'm gonna go through each one uh. Similar to what's in your uh, agenda for today, though I'm gonna start with wastewater capital, you might have noticed I skipped wastewater capital, just to keep them all together. So I'm gonna start with wastewater capital, and it's going to be on page two sixty-eight, so that's in the appendix, but it's on page two sixty-eight of the of the budget.
This is great.
But yeah, that, thank you to Mike Simmons for that.
Yeah, it's really good.
Okay, let me get there myself, and I'm gonna actually start by sharing my screen, so this is wastewater capital. And I'm gonna start by sharing my screen, I'm not gonna do this for each one unless you'd like me to, but I just, since we're doing a different format here, I just want to go through that and bring it up on the screen. Make it a little bigger.
And that's actually page two sixty-six, I think, in our document.
Thank you, yes, it is page two sixty-six. So um, this appendix for each capital fund has the same general oversight of and items in it that the main budget document does. So before this is a summary of the fund itself, it's, uh, then it has goals for the fund, and then it gets into something new. This is uh, Mr. Piaszeki suggested we give a much broader overview of what we have in front of us today for the, for the current budget, for the proposed budget year. And what's coming down in the next six-year budget, so we in Public Works always have these six years on, in our mind. But we've never put it in our budget to show council, to show the public that here's what we're planning also. So let's be very aware that you can't think we can do it all in one year, or hey, maybe there's a project that you were thinking of, and we already have it planned, but it's not for this year, it's two years out, three years out, whatever. So we gave our six-year CIP here. And so that's what you see before you. It is based off of, though it's not identical to the wastewater comprehensive plan. And dollar amounts are also use um. Dollar amounts that often come from the wastewater comprehensive plan or elsewhere. And you can see on the very leftmost column, it says objective number, that is the objective number in the twenty twenty-two budget. So if there is an objective number next to it, WW one, go to wastewater capital fund number one. It also coincides with the capital project list that you have on your map. So they should all equal. Councilmember Franch, is there a question?
Well, no, I I mean, this is something new, so I'm really trying to um, piece this all together here. Is the. I thought that we had the um. The the, some of these numbers for the the Ryan and Cascade, I, this one point four million that's showing up is twenty twenty-two, isn't that in the twenty twenty-one budget?
It is, but we're not gonna finish it, so this is carryover, and I'll get to that in a minute.
Okay, so.
Yeah, you'll you'll see some, some objectives that carry over that, and this is just the amount we're proposing to spend in twenty twenty-two. We'll spend some of the money in twenty twenty-one, and we'll spend for WW number six, Ryan Street Cascade Avenue Lift Station.
Right, so if, if, just, i- it, on the page two sixty-seven, that's the second page of this, where it says four point seven eight seven million dollars for twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
That, there's a large portion of that that's already appropriated in the twenty twenty-one budget, right?
There's, that, no, that doesn't, no, it's not, this four point seven eight seven is, should be all that you see here listed in twenty twenty-two.
Well, didn't we have money for Ryan Street in the twenty twenty-one budget?
We did, but we're spending some of that, and we're real, we have to reallocate it at the end of every year, so.
If we, if we, that's not gonna get done till like spring, but we're spending money now, but we're not gonna put that money we're spending now, that's in the twenty twenty-one budget. So it costs more than that, but the amount, the extra money will be spent in this current year.
Okay, so this is the, this one point four million.
Remained of what has to do to.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, so I'm going to proceed, I can take it off the screen if you'd like, but I'm gonna proceed down. And I'm gonna just go through each objective in wastewater capital, then we'll go into it, we'll answer questions. So again, just take a look at this, you'll see on the six-year tip, there there's lift station five improvements. Lift station eight improvements, you go on year by year by year, and the annual totals, you can see um. Very.
And and Jeff, I believe you meant the the six-year CIP, not the six-year tip.
Thank you, CIP not tip, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna start, and again, the numbering on this one is a little off, but I have number nine, that's actually number one, near wastewater.
We'll get all that numbering cleaned up for the final document.
Editing, uh, so something we also did, and you see it on the very first one here, is we are breaking out what we're anticipating on doing, how we're anticipating spending money. So this is a simple one, there's a simple expense summary, there's a simple funding summary. In previous years' versions and in the main body of the budget, we don't say how we're spending the money. But here you can see, we're anticipating for INI repairs, we're gonna spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do construction. That's public works contract, testing and changer authority. So there's a more detailed breakdown of where we're, how we're anticipating the, what, where these expenses will come from. And then a breakdown of the funding summary, which is in table format instead of listing, which is easier to read. So INI repair, this is something we do every year, or we try and get to every year, we spent the money for twenty twenty-one INI repairs on the repair of the gravity sewer lift station in front of End Bowl Park. Going on to the next one, lift station two A, uh, generator replacement, very simple, uh, need to replace the existing generator, and it's eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh, lift station twelve, Wood Hill Rehabilitation, another project that council has already awarded, and so we're gonna be expending some funds in twenty twenty-one. What you see here is the amount remaining, we anticipate to be expended in twenty twenty-two. Uh, lift station fourteen, Wagner Way, uh, this shows that we're going to be um, doing some rehabilitation in that lift station. Some of it is due to just ongoing operations and maintenance needs, some of it has to do with capacity. We have in here that we anticipate receiving thirty-five thousand dollars from a developer contribution. That depends on how that developer of, it's essentially, it's Mallard Landing Lot Seven. Uh, which direction they will be flowing their sewer, that hasn't yet been determined, but we put in the budget, if they are going to be flowing to lift station fourteen, we're gonna have them provide some of the funding for this, for this um, project.
And we're not gonna let them go uphill on the grinder pumps.
Right, that's, 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 we're, yeah, we need to iron all those details out, but yes. Um, and you can see on this one, this is the first one we've come across now that shows the expense summary, we're gonna have forty-two thousand dollars anticipated for design and permitting, and a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for construction. And then you see the breakdown of of how we're gonna fund that. Lift station one, Crescent Creek Park Rehabilitation, a hundred and five thousand dollars. Lift station six, Ryan Street, that's the, again, the remaining amount that we anticipate expending in twenty twenty-two. And then Tinson Avenue Slip Linings of the Sewer Main. I believe this one is anticipated to be in-house design, so yeah, staff intense design in-house and bid using small public works roster. And we're gonna consolidate this ideally with our storm slip lining, it's the same technique, could be the same likely, it makes sense to be the same contractor. So um, we'll do a, a cost savings to bid it out as one project instead of two or three different projects.
What's the diameter of the slip lining you're doing?
I'll ask Trent if he knows.
The sewer on Stinson, I believe, is is uh.
Uh, eight inch line. I think the Harborview main is um fifteen. That work that we just completed with the Harborview intersection. Since the line, I believe is an eight inch main.
I've seen that done with uh eleven foot diameter.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something that our pipes are getting to the point where we can start using these technologies and this is going to be one of the first ones we've done here in the city. But it's quite a cost savings. Uh, Murphy's Landing Marine and Navigation Channel, this is just completing what we've already started. Uh, we're going to need to continue to pay the consultant, so that's outstanding amount for twenty twenty-two. Alright, so that's wastewater capital. Any questions on wastewater capital? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to also add back in, was talking to Daryl before he left on vacation. Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestor upgrades and centrifuge ammonia control. That's in the twenty twenty-one budget on page one eighty-eight of the twenty twenty-one budget. Daryl is at this point thinking that we're not, we'll get through the design, but we're not going to be able to get through the construction and all the material acquisition in time because it's taking such a long time to obtain those materials. So um, we are looking to reallocate that into twenty twenty-two. We'll just take whatever's outstanding and reallocate it. We're not looking at this point to increase the budget. I think it's one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Let me look real quick. But that, that, when we update the budget will be something to include, that we will include in that also. Yeah, so I'm on page one eighty-eight of the twenty twenty-one budget and it's one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Do that number in there again. Okay, I'm going to stop my screen share and then we're going to jump to. Streets Capital. I have that on page two fifty-seven. Again, we're in the appendix itself. Um, actually, that's, that's the first objective. I might go ahead and back up and just, just for reference purposes to have you look at. The six-year CIP for this budget. You'll see the six-year CIP takes up three pages. There is a lot that is being proposed under Streets Capital, so.
It actually starts on two fifty-five.
Oh, the spreadsheet does. Yes. And you can see those dollar amounts, but with the transportation benefit district, the hospital benefit zone and others, uh, and, and grants. Um, I'm going to point out to you the uh funding sources, the projects that receive or propose to receive grant funding through federal dollars, which. There's an anomaly in here. There's number, you'll see item objective number three twice. So we're going to go through a couple of those and uh, talk about whether or not we want to proceed with them. So I'm going to jump down to page two fifty-eight. That's the first objective, even though in my book it's. Numbered, number thirteen. Public Works, oh, sorry, that's Public Works Operations Center. We already talked about that, but this is what it looks like on paper. Building and furnishings, two hundred thousand dollars, construction three point one nine. And then the various funding summaries of how we're going to fund that project. Uh, next item is Stinson Harborview Intersection Improvements. Uh, that'll be completing what we started this year. Two point one million dollars. Next item. Burnham Drive Halffoot Frontage Improvements. Technically, it's number three. It's shown as number fifteen. There's an or in this one, and so I apologize for this if it's confusing, but. The idea is that we will either proceed with the phase one A project that we've talked about. Or if we, because we requested federal funding. Earlier this year, that would do the full phase one improvements. And so the idea is that if we receive the federal funding, we then have to. Expand our scope of work on this project. So at some point soon, before the budget's adopted, we should be anticipating which direction we're going. I hope to hear from the Dale Earn before then.
Well. And I don't recall this, the number three. Option being discussed and I, I'm sure that it was when it got onto this, this request. I think it is totally reprehensible that we would tear out existing sidewalks. Um, that.
So one thing, this is not the place to debate. This is not, that's not what they, these are to hear. Save that for the October twenty-eighth, please.
Okay, I, I hope, again, if there's any questions on what, why there's two number threes, which one of them's labeled.
I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, do we know um, we have any sense on the federal grant call? Is that a, a high confidence or a shot in the dark or?
I, I would call it a medium confidence. Uh, we're really waiting to see what happens with um.
And when would we know the answer on that?
Well, if you've been following the news, who knows? We're, we're waiting for the.
It's close.
The next.
I feel like they said definitely by the end of the year, so.
Like, yes, definitely by the end of the year and probably, probably by the end of November with the, the deal on the uh, the next infrastructure plan gets done. The one that includes both the hard and the soft infrastructure. I think ours was in the first bill, but um, they're holding that up and not approving it until. I guess the second bill gets done too in the House, so they're not telling anyone what's in it. So we could be in there and we may not be. We don't know.
Okay, that's, that's November of two thousand twenty-two?
Knock on wood.
It's, no, it's, this next month.
This November, okay.
Next month, okay. I thought you said twenty, you meant this year. Yes, this year.
Okay.
Jeff, and the culvert that we asked for in the federal funds and you're talking about here is the one under Harborview Drive and like Austin, that one, right?
No, it's the one under Burnham Drive just south of ninety-sixth street.
Okay, I see that here, okay.
So we could, we, we would know by the end of the year whether the federal grant was successful, okay? So it looks to me like you could go in with. The number three is your prime, but have your backup being uh, just the. Harborview, the, the prior section, the upper section, the fourteen hundred square, fourteen hundred square, not square feet, linear feet.
We're calling that one A and the full project is phase one.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. We're either doing one A, which is non-federal grant funded, or phase one, which is federal grant funded.
Before we, before we pass the budget, we'll make a decision uh which way we're going to go, based upon the knowledge we know going forward.
Okay. Okay, appreciate your patience on that one. That one's an anomaly, of course. But you can see at the bottom of that objective for phase one, it does have a breakdown of how we're receiving the revenues for that project. Uh, next item, Harbor History Museum driveway entrance revision, carryover from last year. I think we increased the cost by three thousand dollars for this one.
And that's not paid twice. You know, we saw that in the history museum at, at the ninety-three. It's just showing it in both places, correct? It's, it's, it's under the administration part.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we just pay for it once. Yeah, yeah.
Just to be, but no.
Just a question, did they, it was the original driveway built wrong or what? I, I still don't understand was.
Well, it's, 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 the driveway was, didn't take into account long wheelbase vehicles or very low clearance vehicles. Most vehicles do just fine, but it was, yeah, when the city built the sidewalk and widened the sidewalk. We had a limited access and so they changed the vertical grade coming into the sidewalk from the driveway. And the long wheelbase vehicles and low, very low riding vehicles are, are hitting the asphalt.
Oh, this is one out of a hundred, one out of a thousand?
Yeah.
Any feel for what it is?
It's. It's buses and lower, low riding cars.
Okay.
It's not very many of them, but it is, it is buses and the museum, you know, has students go there, so.
Okay, this is low buses, some kind.
I don't, I don't know. I, that's.
I haven't seen any.
I haven't seen any low buses.
I just see the ground out and the, the, the marks on the asphalt. That's what I see.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I, I gotta think about this one a little bit. It's um, by the way, there's design standards all over the place in terms of approach and departure angles, breakover angles and all that on driveways, okay? And I can't imagine somebody designing a vehicle that wouldn't include that, okay? If you met the prior standards for that particular.
But it, it increased. I mean, we can get into the, I, I'm happy to have a side conversation about this, but it increased the slope when we did our project.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um, I'm on to the next agenda or the next objective, mid-block flash, rapid flash beacon cross system. This is a carryover from twenty twenty-one budget. We were not able to complete it in twenty twenty-one. So uh, mid-block crossing at Fiftieth Street, adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park and Soundview Drive near Hunt Street.
A question, um, in previous years, we've had a couple extras, which are really nice to have. Um, when, you know, just like these emails we've gotten recently. So do we, you know, we typically used to have like two extra ones and then we could use them right when we needed without, without ordering them. Do you have in the budget so that we can either have a couple, two or three extras at the city?
We don't. Those extras that we had were at ones that we bought for lift station for Welcome Plaza. And we paid for those to be used on a temporary basis during the construction project and then we put those into our inventory as backup. And then we put them at the Judson Street Crossing at Soundview.
And we also put one, you know, we want one at Hunt. And we also had one up on um, Scancy be, um, because of the long, the speeding. So do you have in the budget to have a couple in spare, ready to deploy if we need it?
We don't.
Don't have any of them?
No, we don't have any extras to keep in inventory, no.
Jeff, and the, and the emails that we got today from that lady up in North Key Harbor, you responded so well to. You implied that there was funding available for that.
There is pedestrian safety fund. I forget what page that's on, but it's in the, it's in the twenty twenty-one budget and it's in the twenty twenty-two budget.
Okay.
And we didn't spend any money in twenty twenty-one.
Shows like two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in there, I think.
It sounds about right.
So that would.
So that, that could be used if, if.
If that was the ma- what the mayor was speaking to, if we had those available for that particular project, mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to have two. I'd like you to put in, if council wants to take it out, that's fine. We'll, we'll deal with that. But if you would put two extras in your budget, um, so that we have to. So be partially because this, a lot of this has to do with the supply delay. If we don't order, I'd rather order these without knowing where they're going to go in January. So that when we find out we have to use it, we don't have to wait six or nine months to get it.
Okay, so you're saying order the materials and put them in inventory for two separate sets.
Yes.
Of flashing beacons.
Which would be four total. Yep, four total, because I, I know I've asked you to do two or three. That we had already in-house without having to go to council and that one was on Scancy and that's a big deal. And the other is Judson and I think you already have one in the budget for Fiftieth and Soundview, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think for fifty thousand dollars a piece or so, a pair of two.
That include, that, that number includes pedestrian ramps on either side. So I mean, how much is the RFP units? Twenty thousand? At least.
Right, so a set would be forty.
Fifty, forty to fifty.
Yeah, okay, so if you would put, you know, when we come back, I think council will support this, if you would put us to have two complete sets. Um, in the budget, so we have those in-house in our inventory.
And Jeff, when is the um, crosswalk at Fiftieth planned for next year? The one going to Veterans Memorial Park?
We don't have that planned yet. The idea, I believe, is for in-house design. Let me double check.
They have been asking for that for years, that senior community there. I thought it was done.
No, yeah, it's, it's when we have staff capacity to do the in-house design and then we will have it installed.
But we'll, for sure, we'll do it next year.
No, there's in-house design and in-house construction, so it's, depends on staff capacity.
Okay. I'm sure they're all dying to use it now that Met Market is right up the street, because that's what they needed is to be able to walk to shopping.
Yeah, no, that's exactly why it's been in the budget.
A, a question, um, if we buy them and don't use them right away, because Vantage brought this up to my attention, do we lose our warranty if we don't use them for six months? Do they break down? You know, let's say we buy it and then the warranty is only good so long and we don't deploy it right away.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we would lose the warranty, yeah.
Do they tend to break down right, right before we install them?
They're reliable.
Okay, yeah, it's worth the risk, okay.
And, and a lot of the, I mean, that cost for the equipment isn't just for electronics. There's things that don't break down that's in there. There's the poles and everything.
Yeah, put two, two, put two sets in.
Okay, I'm on to another federally funded. Oh, I'm sorry, no, it's not. This is the right turn lane, Willatchit Drive to SR sixteen westbound. I'm sorry, it, it's listed number nineteen in my. Conceptual design. So the idea, this is a carryover item from twenty twenty-one. Uh, to put together conceptual design and submit it to WashDOT for their approval, hundred fifty thousand dollars. Paid for out of transportation benefit district and transportation impact fees.
Jeff, is this one of the things that we have on our legislative agenda?
It is.
Okay, so the plan is to just move forward and if we get the money, great, and if we don't, we'll use our money?
Yes, and I think that there would be benefit to going to state representatives saying we're already moving forward with design. And if it's already in the queue for WashDOT to review for their IJR, then even further along. Next item, twenty Prentice Avenue, Fenimore Halffoot Frontage Improvements, roadway improvements. Um, this is what we're, our consultant is completing right now. By the end of the year, we've planned on having a conceptual design. All the surveying completed and a conceptual cost estimate. Based on that conceptual design and conceptual cost estimate, we'll come back to council, make sure that what we're proposing is adequate. And then based on direction we get from council at that point, proceed with final design, final permitting with anticipated construction in twenty twenty-three. Uh, Borgan Boulevard Streetlights, there's a section of Borgan Boulevard that Operations Division is looking to put four new streetlights on. I believe they have the foundations already set, do you know? I know, okay. I think for this price, I think Ken noted that we already have the foundations already set. We just need to buy the lights and install them.
Where, where is that area?
It's uh, on the very eastern edge. Athena is the roadway that goes into Harbor Hill, South Platts. East, further east than the entrance to um. Heron's Key.
Okay.
It's not a very long section.
Alright, thank you.
It is very dark though, so thank you Jeff for, I appreciate you guys putting those in. It's a dark stretch.
It is. Uh, Thirty-Eighth Avenue Halffoot Frontage Improvements Phase Two. This is dependent on federal funds, so um. All right, let me. Yeah, so um, this is for design and construction. And uh, boy, that's, no, it's designed permitting only, sorry. Eight hundred thousand, it says in the, in the text that the objective design and construct, but it's, the dollar amount is just for design and we can design and construct it in one year. So the eight hundred thousand dollars is just for design, sorry. We'll get that correct.
And that's still contingent on federal funds?
It is. It, it, the design itself is identifying five hundred thousand dollars for federal funds.
Uh, that's a, that's a federal fund grant that's aside from the asks that we have through our lobbyists, correct?
No, it is the same.
It is in there, okay.
Then that, yep, it's in that same, sorry.
And, and the total project is expected to be.
I want to say three million, isn't that? Three million, somewhere in that range for construction.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Willatchit Wagner Way Intersection Improvements. Uh, this is to construct the intersection improvements and this would be contingent at this point upon nine hundred thousand dollars coming from federal grants. Two hundred thousand from TBD, two hundred thousand from TIFF.
It's a traffic light or what is it?
Uh. It is, yes. Yep.
So the. It's, it's a hundred and fifty, I'm, I'm assuming the way this reads you.
It's, it's a hundred and fifty. I'm, I'm assuming the way this reads, you have a. Project design.
We had a project designed and bid back, I think in 2014 or 2015 for this intersection, but it was more money than the, we wanted to spend. So we would need to update that design and that's what that $150,000 is for. And then put it back out to bid.
And you know, this has been on the radar for probably seven years, but now there's more developed. Down there, there's now with landings, there's going to be two more in. As you know, if you use the ponds right there, the pond say cross at the crosswalk. Um, but there is no crosswalk. And so we also have some developers that have paid a little bit into this. So this is going to be necessary. We have a storage facility that's actually going. Um, right when you go over Pioneer Street Pioneer Way. Um, where that waterfall landscaping company is right near TCC, there's going to be a storage unit right there. So. Um, so it's, it's going to be necessary.
Well, I understand that. Is it correct? The big benefit is being able to make a left-hand turn out of Wagner Way.
That's what.
Watch it.
Correct. That's what triggered the signal warrants analysis.
Okay.
Even if you saw our emergency traffic situations we had this summer, that was one of the detours.
And all of these that we just mentioned are contingent on federal funds. And I don't know that I'm super optimistic.
Right.
We might get one. I'd be happy to get one. So.
But I would like to point out that when we raised the two tenths of a percent sales tax, it was for new roads and new improvements. And there's, and it's 1.6 million a year. And that's what, that's, that's this type of stuff. Yeah. But if we can still do, and my point is we can still do some of these projects if they're not listening, uh, with, without getting our funds. They're too busy.
Uh, let me see. Is that the last? Now we have the last item, uh, Burnham Drive SR 16 roundabout metering. Uh, again, contingent on federal grant. Of 1.1 million total construction cost, 1.5 million. Our design and permitting and construction.
And did you, since I'm not here next year, and some of us remember going to the hospital with the Pierce Transit. And they, they, they told us they couldn't have the hot, the buses go to come, go from the hospital because they could not enter the roundabout. Because of the speed that the roundabout was going with the types of buses. So metering this might also make it so Pierce Transit could go to the, go to the hospital with their buses because it would slow the roundabout down. That's it. Might be an added benefit.
Is it correct to assume that this would also help the downhill traffic on westbound, uh, Burnham coming down the hill?
Yes.
On westbound Burnham.
Morgan. Morgan. I'm sorry. Morgan.
Okay. Okay. Will it help? Yes. But the primary benefit of this will, it has been in the past to reduce the queuing of traffic. On the east, westbound 16 off ramp.
Yeah.
That has been the primary purpose of that.
This is programmable, I assume.
It is programmable. Yeah.
Great.
All right. That's all I had for streets capital. Any questions? Okay. I'm going to move to storm capital on page two eighty-one, I believe. At the very end. And I apologize, uh, Michael and his fine sharp pencil caught a few, uh, revisions that need to be made on this. So, uh, mostly it's the slip lining numbers don't match up. I, I, they increased by a little bit from 67.5 to 73.5, I think. Anyway. Michael's going to get all that wrapped up in the public works operation. No, no, that's correct. That's correct. Okay. Um, I'm going to continue down to the objectives itself. We're going to skip public works operation center and go right to objective two. Storm pipe slip lining. We alluded to this one earlier. Two slip lining of storm pipes. Try and maintain, reduce costs in-house design, uh, small public works contract for the construction. Uh, item or objective three, Donkey Creek Daylighting at Harborview Drive conceptual design and feasibility something, uh, study. That was originally in the 2021 budget, not able to get to that this year. So carrying that into 2022. Objective four, Burnham Drive Coler replacement at 96. That goes and coincides with the Burnham Drive Halffoot roadway improvements. Regardless of whether it's phase one A or phase one. And then marine outfall maintenance. This had been in operating, but because of the cost, we moved it into capital. And so it's more than what we've seen in the past, but, uh, we continue to not complete this objective. And so we are needing to do more and more. And then lastly, the public works operations division de-camp facility. That initially didn't get it, didn't get into the budget. I hope you see that. Is that in your version? I have objective six. Okay. So, um, this, we, we do have an agreement with City of Port Orchard to use, but, uh, with all the infrastructure, we've put it into the new operations center. We've, we are ready to put a de-camp facility at our own site. There's, by putting it at our own site, there's going to be significant decreases, even though Port Orchard's less expensive than going to Tacoma. It's going to be even more cost savings for the city to just have one onsite. So that's what that proposal was. Designing, design it in 2022, construct it in 2023. Any questions? That's us.
Again, the purpose of the de-camp.
Uh, that's where we take.
That's a factor.
Vector.
Okay, got it.
Uh, tank and drain it into the facility. So we can, depending on what we were using it for. If we were just using it for utility potholing, we can just take the soil out of there and, uh, just bring it to pretty topsoil and dispose it for a very inexpensive, low cost. But if we're cleaning catch basins or, or something else that has to go to the garbage dump, we can remove all the water. So we're not paying for the water to dispose of water.
Great. Thank you.
It's a great, great deal. And it'll be, it'll save on the vector truck a lot.
Yeah. A lot of miles that we wouldn't have to drive the vector truck up and down the road. Yep.
Jeff, on number four, the culvert replacement, there's been, maybe Councilmember Denson would have an answer to this. There's been some talk about federal funding for culverts. Do you know if that project, if that money ever came in for culverts, would any of that possibly come to be used for that?
I think it's in the infrastructure bill and so we don't know yet. Hopefully.
So, but maybe some federal dollars might even come in for that project.
Yes, that would be.
Which would be awesome.
But that, and then we could use that for construction because this is only 35,000 for the design. We want the big bucks for construction.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Markley. I thought you were referring to item four Burnham Drive.
Item number four. So design and permitting is 280,000.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at the number three.
Yes. And construction 2.4 million. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, that, that could be used for that potentially, right?
It could, if it comes through the federal. Yeah.
If it, if it, if it's included in the infrastructure bill, and then we probably have to apply for our, our culvert.
It, it could. Yes. We, and we would have to, what we call federalize the project. Right now this cost is based off of not being federalized, I'm assuming. So we would have to increase the costs and, and, uh, make sure that it's a federal.
Is it worse to do that or, or better to just do it ourselves?
Depends on how much money we're receiving from the federal government.
Okay. Okay. Great.
But if it's being done in conjunction with another project that is also getting federal funds, it's feder- it's federalized anyway.
Jeff, after you get federal funding for something like that, a- and it's built, is there ongoing cost, uh, associated with it because it was built with federal funds?
No, unless the only ongoing costs we have are for, usually for just mitigation monitoring. Yeah.
Just a one, one last question. Do you have any of this laid out on a span chart of any kind? So you know, you got some sense of how this all fits together. This is a very aggressive plan we've got here in total.
I'm assuming you're talking about all of the capital projects, not just each individual fund.
Okay. I just want to make sure that Trent can survive on one hour of sleep a night or something like that. You know? Um, cause it's, it's pretty aggressive.
It is, it is aggressive and, um, that's going to be our task after this is to make sure, a lot of them are carryovers. But we'll be now allocating these projects across our schedules and across our staff to figure out how we're going to do this.
Okay. It, I guess where I'm heading for in this meeting on the 28th, I guess it is. I think we should have some kind of a priority when we walk out of there. Well, I really do. Uh. But it'd be wonderful if we can contain all this. I'm not being negative here, but realistically, uh, things happen. And, uh, we at least had to have some sense of, uh, similar to the tiering thing that you're doing right now. Except these haven't started. Okay. Uh, a lot of these have not started. So the, I think one of these, we have to come out of there, which is probably a combined council and staff decision called, what are our real priorities here? Both here. Okay.
I think that a draft priority is a good idea, but it seems to me the priorities would change depending upon staffing for one thing. Uh, depending upon whether we get federal funding or not. If it's going to take a while to get the federal funding and we don't have the staff, we need to do this project. If it's, you know, that, that's a big mix to set a priority is a difficult thing, but you're right.
Yeah, yeah. Have a feel for it.
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, some, exactly.
Yeah. And as we saw in the Harborview Stints and Roundabout, you throw in a unanticipated sewer relocation and it really adjusts your schedule for you. So permitting, construction constraints and then funding constraints.
Okay.
One thing that also would determine that is, you know, how, what percentage already designed? Because when, when we got some with, with some of those funds, they had to be so much designed to even be in the timeframe. So like, is it Wagner 30% designed or something?
Well, Wagner will watch it's, it's 90%.
Yeah. So some of that's going to dictate it. What's already designed? Because then there's, we staff's already spending that time. And definitely do it before it changes all over. Maybe before you have to do it all over again.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to water capital. It is on page two seventy-four in the appendix. We did storm water.
Arts on two seven.
And wastewater capital.
What page? Two seventy-three.
Okay. Yeah. Two seventy-three is the CIP.
And then the project descriptions are on two seventy-five.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to skip, uh, this mine's numbered, uh, objective six is the first one. Public Works Operations Center, we're gonna skip. Uh, next one, emergency water intertight, Canwood Boulevard. Continue the ongoing, uh, design permitting and construction of that. Um, more to come. Gig Harbor North Sports Complex Water Main. That is, uh, dependent on the design of phase one B. Redrive Water Main Improvements. Um, this is something that, uh, we have a. A, a need to replace an aging PVC main that was put in by a developer in the water system that we took over. After the developer and the existing water company couldn't do it anymore. So we've had this in our water system for a while. We've known about it. It's in our water system plan. It's at a point where we have to address it now.
Jeff, how many linear feet of the pipe is this?
I, I can look at it real quick. I thought it was only a few hundred linear feet.
And you're replacing the PVC with ductile iron?
I'm pretty sure it was ductile iron. It's replace it with.
Or you're going to replace with PVC? Okay.
All right.
On, on Reed Drive?
Yes.
Are you, you talking, where, where exactly are you talking?
Uh.
It's 55th Court, East of Reed Drive.
It's, it's im- immediately south of the intersection of Hollycroft and Reed on the water side, the east side of the road, of Reed Road. It drops down and serves 55th, which goes down, but almost to the edge of the cliff, top of the cliff.
That's, but that's, is that the city limits or is that UGA that we service?
It's in the UGA that we service.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, well, nine Olympus Way, um, development of that wa- of that well and processing of water rights. This has been on our. CIP for water for a few years, quite, quite a few years. I think the original water right permit application was from two, the year 2000.
What does PRV stand for?
Pressure reducing valve.
And where is this well at?
Um, right now we're looking to site it nearby the Gig Harbor North Water Tank. There's not enough room within that fenced area, but we need to look for a, a location somewhere in that area. We, we've had a couple of options, but, uh, right now we're just anticipating it's going to be somewhere right near the Gig Harbor North well, water tank. And that's it for water capital. Questions? Oh, yes. Thank you, Trent. Uh, on, on that wall, well, number nine, we are identifying ARPA funds at $2 million. We originally, when, when the. Water system plan doesn't identify ARPA funds, but when. The city discussed what to do with ARPA funds back in June of this year, this project was identified as a project that would be funded through ARPA funds. That's what it's showing in the budget.
So what is the total amount for this project? So far is we're seeing 434, four million point three, four ma- almost four million and a half dollars. Is that right?
For the water, well, number nine project?
Yeah.
No, the total project right now is, uh, 2.1 million.
What about 225, 2025? Isn't there another?
I'm sorry. Yes, that's for, uh, that, that could be for getting it. Or putting it. We anticipate that if we get additional water rights, that we're going to have to do additional mitigation elsewhere in the basin. So as long as we don't get additional water rights, the 2.1 million dollars should be able to cover us in terms of costs. But once you start to get additional water rights, you have to mitigate. And so there's, that money is set in there to do the additional mitigation to extend water rights.
Why would we need additional water rights?
Cause we are going to be running out of water at some point and not being able to supply, um, meet, meet the demands of the city as it grows.
Jeff, we're mostly well water, correct?
We are fully well water.
Full well water. So.
But one thing.
I, I, I can guarantee.
We can get it. We just have to apply for it. Is that correct?
Correct. For example.
People are worried about it. Yeah.
And all of the wells that we currently have over the years will become less productive. Uh, they, this typically what they do. So if you're getting, um. A certain amount out of the well today, in 10, 15 years, maybe 10% or 15% less. So you have to start planning for the future. So you can at least stay where you're at.
But when, but it's not that we're running out of water. You just have to ask for more, to be permitted for more, correct?
Correct. Yes. And, and so we, we have an excessive amount of, we have more water rights today than we need to withdraw water to supply our residents.
The current residents today.
Current residents today. But as we add residents, we're going to, they're going to chip away at those. I mean, that's what water concurrency is about. To make sure we reserve enough for future developments. And so we're going to be getting to a point soon. It's identified in the water system plan that we will need additional water rights and additional sources for wells, well sources.
And that's what the 2.3?
Yeah. And because we anticipate through the permitting process that when we start to get additional water rights, we're going to have to mitigate those water rights somewhere. And that, that's a whole separate discussion about how we mitigate for water rights.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. And also the, the two, you know, the ARP is not money from, for fish. Just so people know, that's a separate year.
Well, and remember we got one and a half million here just last month and next June will be another million and a half.
So this, what, won't affect what we talked about yesterday.
Correct.
This will basically take the rest of our ARPA funds, it sounds like, between fish and this.
Well, this is next year's money.
We should have a balance of 500,000 after this.
For 2021, right?
We're getting about three million total in ARP funds.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
So, well, maybe we can have a discussion of the public, cause I. Go ahead. Have some same questions about, why this 2.3 million dollars is, um, out in the out year 2025? So I would like a little more clarity on that. That won't take up the time here doing that. And also at that public works committee meeting, maybe we could find out, uh, how much water, uh, ERUs we have, um. Available right now with. Our existing supply, so to speak, you know, our existing rights. So, right? Then we can have a little further discussion on that.
I'll tentatively put that on the December. I'll tentatively put that on the December Public Works Committee meeting. The November one's agenda is pretty full already.
Hey, do we have one more?
Yes, we have one more capital fund, Parks Development, Parks Capital, page 247, somewhere in around there.
And I would just like to reiterate, I don't know if it was the mayor or somebody said this, this, this format with having this spreadsheet is very helpful.
I think that was Tony's idea.
Was Tony's idea.
Yes, good job. 247.
Okay, yeah, the CIP table is on 247 and the objectives begin on 249. First objective is listed as number nine, Gig Harbor North Sports Complex Phase One B Design and Permitting. So I hope that we can find a consultant before the end of this year. We have money budgeted for this year. Depends on how mu, if, if, if we have the capacity, staff capacity to do that. But I hope to get a consultant on board and then embark on design and permitting. It does show on this one, we've had a number of different options on how we're going to fund this. This does show that it's federal grant funded. So we'll see. We did put in the request from the federal, lot through the federal lobbyists.
Are we prepared though, if we don't get that federal grant to move forward with this design and permitting?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay.
I'm going to skip the Public Works Operations Center, going to go to Masonic Lodge Building Visioning. This is a carryover last year, as is Crescent Creek Master Plan and Concept, conceptual design.
I'd say this used to be a higher figure and I asked Jeff to lower it because I wanted most of this to be in-house so that we're not really having a consultant telling us, I guess, what we're going to do. But mostly staff and council directed with a public outreach, so it should be pretty simple. So meaning having us make a decision. So that's why it's 10,000.
So what about the 50,000?
Yeah, the, the 50,000 is for Crescent Creek Park Visiting.
That's different.
Well, and it's conceptual planning as well. Which the Masonic Lodge may kind of fold into.
Yeah, so what we were doing is we were having the, the council, the public decide more on the Masonic and then having the the master plan of the consultants for Crescent Creek just focus on the volleyball ADA up to, up to the higher area and the property beside, behind the Masonic, those two pieces down to the water, but not on the ballpark, the parking and the picnic area and the playground.
Next objective is Community Paddler's Dock, carryover, we're under contract and we just wanted to put some money into 2022 in case some of the expenses came in under the 2022 budget. Next item, Scansy Net Shed Starship Repairs. We've had lengthy discussions about this. We need to do the roof and the repainting. We're going to continue to look into the options of repainting. Councilmember Franch and I have had some discussions. I need to follow up with Councilmember Franch on those to see if there's other ways to get the painting completed that still falls within the requirements for Department of Ecology for painting over water structures. Next item, Gig Harbor North Trails. As noted here, Pro's Plan identifies citing some various trails through Gig Harbor North. Old Burnham Properties is one of those we've identified and Phase Three Gig Harbor North Sports Complex. This money would complete the design and permitting to get those trails installed. They could be installed, the ones designed and permitted through city operations crew. And that's it. That's it for Parks Operating, Parks Capital, sorry. Well, that's the end of my presentation. I appreciate everyone sticking through and thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
We, as we said, we'll update these. We're going to, unless there's any opposition, we'll continue to, we'll move forward with the plan of taking out all capital out of the main budget and putting it into its own separate document.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We, we'll continue to plan on pulling out all capital funds out of the main budget document, putting it into its own separate document so that it's focused in one area.
Perfect. Good, great. Good. Thank you both. So then any changes that you've said, you'll get different sheets for our 28th meeting.
We'll work with Dave, Michael and get those prepared.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So we're adjourned. Thank you, council.